Welcome to another budget hearing. Today is Wednesday, May 29th. It's 6:03 PM. This is our third budget hearing. And tonight, we are being recorded on Zoom. We are being livestreamed on the Cable Access Channel. Thank you, Holyoke Media. We're also on the city's livestream through the website. We are joined by many department heads. And in council chambers with me this evening, I have Counselor Graney, Counselor Devine, Counselor Anderson Burgos, Counselor Bacon, Counselor Ocasio, myself, Tessa Murphy-Ronbeletti. And online, we have Counselor Kevin Jordan, Counselor Jenny Rivera, Counselor Cocaine Givner. And I don't think I'm missing any other city councilors. So this evening, we're going to go through the agenda. And department heads, I'll invite you guys in. We're joined by the mayor as well. Thank you for being here. So the first item on the agenda is the City Solicitor's Office. That is page eight. And just want to remind people again that if you're referring to a specific line item, please read the object code for that line item. It helps us as we're going through all the different budgets. So with that, I'll invite, Mayor, do you want to come in? Great. And Lisa Ball is here. Attorney Ball, thank you. Absolutely, have a seat. Welcome.
Just as the night goes on, if people, city councilors, especially if they could ask their questions and maybe move on to other things, let other councilors speak and, you know, rotate it so that it's not taking up the whole meeting with one or two people.
Sure, yeah, we'll be mindful of that. And also, just want to remind everyone, please make sure that when you're speaking tonight, that you're, if you are speaking, the green microphone's on and that you're actually speaking into the microphone. I got a lot of feedback yesterday that folks were not able to be heard. It's not to be heard by us, it's for the folks at home who are trying to listen. So with that, I will offer you the opportunity to give us an overview of anything that you want to highlight or have us be aware of, and then we can open it up for questions.
I think that the personal services is pretty self-explanatory. It's a 2% COLA for every person in the law department, with the exception of the paralegal who's already at the high end of her range. So unfortunately, she's not eligible to get a 2% raise. Expenses, you'll see expenses are lower. And that's because some of the supplies are going to go through procurement now. I'm sure you already heard that. So we're going to see a decrease in things like office supplies. Probably some of the things that are larger now. Last year, we had $1,000 in in-state travel. The mayor has recommended 1,070. The increase for that is because I have to go to a mediation in Boston on an EPA appeal. And I'm going to be there two nights. We might actually need more money than that, but we definitely need at least that much. Deals and subscriptions, I think, are just about the same. We really use that up. That's really for our MMA membership, for everybody in the office, our Lexus. We also pay some license fees. So that's what that is for. Litigation is really filing fees, sheriff's fees, recording fees, things of that nature. Education and training is just for any trainings that we go to throughout the year. That's kind of a small thing. A lot of the trainings we do are free, but sometimes there is a cost. Professional services, other, which is something no, I think, in the last, at least the last year, is more for investigative expenses. So we kind of took that out of special counsel. That's really for us to use investigators, which we've used for the last year for various things, for my department and also for the Personnel Department. And professional services, special counsel is also a little bit higher, but not by much. I think last year, we had 100,000. It was broken up differently, 75 and 25, but we did go through most of it. And the extra money that's in there now is because we do have a pending appeal with the Environmental Appeals Board and possibly one with the Mass DEP. So we're just getting ready to deal with those issues that will be coming up this summer. Other than that, I think that would be the overview of the budget at the Solicitor's Office.
Thank you very much. I have Counselor Graney first, and then Counselor Ocasio.
Thank you, Madam President. Attorney Ball, just a quick question. I'm sure there's a logical explanation. It's line item 51201.
Howie, can you talk into the microphone?
51201.
Just a quick explanation. What's a PT assistant?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, that's a part-time assistant solicitor. So there's two of them. One of them is Mike Bissonette. So that it's a part-time.
PT, part-time.
Yeah, part-time.
Makes sense, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. And just to let everyone know, we are joined in council chambers by Counselor McGrath Smith and Counselor Israel Rivera. Counselor Ocasio.
The only thing I had to say was that to, for the people out here, they're going to be speaking to use the item numbers. It makes it easier to follow.
Right. So just a reminder for folks to use the object code numbers when referring to certain line items. Thank you. I also have Counselor Jordan.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me okay, Madam President?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Oh, well, if you could, like, maybe project more into the microphone. It's a little low because we have the air on right now, too.
Oh, okay. How about now?
Yep. It's better. Not great, but better.
Can, my question is regarding line item 53010, which is the special counsel. The increase to 120,000 from 75,000. And Lisa, could you go over that again for me, please?
Yes, sure. So I think it was separated last year by 75 and 25, but it really was 100,000. I'm not sure why it got separated like that. Generally, 100,000 is really what would get us through the year. About 50,000 of that is paid to our outside Labor Council, who does, you know, all of the union contracts with us. So that eats up half of it right there. We also pay for workers' comp attorneys that we have to hire. They're relatively inexpensive, but we do have somebody that we work with for our, specifically for the DPW Department. And then other things that, you know, come up. We have KP on retainer for various issues. So it's things of that nature. The extra 20,000, as I mentioned, we have a pending appeal before the Environmental Appeals Board and then a possible appeal with the Mass DEP. So it's really, we have a, we have an estimate of what the mediation is going to cost, but it's an estimate. It could be lower, it could be higher. In my experience, it never tends to be lower than the estimate, but it is a possibility. As I mentioned, that's why the increase in the travel item is what it is, because I have to travel out to Boston for two days to participate in the mediation.
Can you give us an overview of what the DEP and EPA issues are, please?
I would actually prefer to do that in executive session.
Okay. So you're saying you need 20,000? Because what I'm reading here is we have a line item of 20,000 and a line item of 120,000, so 140 combined. And we gave you 100 last year, so that's 40,000 more. And you're saying 20 is related to the DEP and EPA?
Right. The other 20, as I mentioned, is we've been using investigators in the office for multiple issues. And I know that Kelly Curran can touch on as well, even though it's in my budget, like how valuable that has been. We've been able to use investigators for all kinds of different issues, whether it's, you know, various properties in the city that we're looking to get administrative search warrants on, and we need to get information to put in our affidavit, or even issues with employees, and we need to hire investigators. It's not something we've done typically in the past, but I think it's something that's really been successful for us. And so seeing how successful it's been in the last year, we want to continue it and maybe use it even a little more than we were using it. And hence, that's kind of why it's in a separate line item, the 20, versus like keeping it in the line item with what we're paying for attorneys.
I know you're planning an executive session pretty soon, hopefully. Can you go over these two items with us, too, when you do?
Of course. I think we're, I'm trying to get that planned. We've been trying to find a date that works, and it just seems like every date has some kind of conflict. But it sounds like we're going to get one planned in the month of June.
Okay. I have another area for you, which is on page 49. It's under claims and damages. That's generally the purview of your department as well. I'd like to talk to you about line item 57630. There's a request here for $200,000 for claims and damages. That's considerably up from what we've historically given. Can you please give us a breakdown of why $200,000?
Sure. So, I mean, typically, it's 100,000, which doesn't always last us throughout the year. Because we use the 100,000 for things like pothole claims, slip and falls, or more significant cases like we've seen that have come through here, and I've had to discuss those in executive session. We do have a pending claim, as everyone knows, and it's a substantial claim. And it, we're hoping to be able to pay some of it out of this line item as opposed to going through the stabilization fund.
So, thank you for bringing that up. Is, how much of this is related to the payment you would like to make for that case we've been talking about?
So probably half of it. I mean, typically, 100,000 is what gets us through the year. So I really would have preferred this to even be higher, to see if we could resolve that matter, if possible. But it's about half is what we would use towards it, if we're able to resolve it.
I just, obviously, I'm very concerned. I don't want to see that paid until we have the reforms in place that we need, and that's the subject of a discussion you and I have had. And I think I've made my statement pretty clear on that, that, you know, I'm very, very concerned about that. And I'm a little concerned we're going the direction of putting this in the budget, because if it goes this direction, then I'm going to have to explain precisely why I'm going to vote no and why I'm going to encourage that this be cut without us getting on the same page relative to where we're going with the reforms that need to take place relative to that case and broader the circumstances that brought that case to this point. So hopefully, there's something in the works. But, you know, I need to be, if we're going to go this direction with it and just put it in the budget to be paid, I'm going to have to explain why, you know, this should not happen. So I'm a little concerned about this being put in the budget in this way as opposed to, you know, the other approach that we were going, which was, I believe there was a request from stabilization. And I know there was a big number attached. I don't, is there a plan for paying the rest of it? Because I think the original proposal was more than this number.
Well, you may recall that there are some pending orders in the Finance Committee right now, I think, that are just sitting because they belong in executive session. So that's one of the items that, as you know, that I'm requesting the executive session to discuss. I did receive your email. It was lengthy. It was a good lengthy response to what I had emailed you. And I can just tell you that myself and Kelly Curran are working on that to try to get you as best a response that we can prior to executive session. And hopefully, then, you know, obviously, share that with the entire council so that we can eliminate as many questions ahead of time as we can by getting you as much information before the meeting instead of during the meeting.
Understood. Thank you.
Other, Counselor, are you all set?
I am, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. So Lisa, could you just briefly, since we've really beefed up the staffing in your department over the last few years, could you run down what the general role of each attorney in the office is and the general book of business they're carrying? And could you let us know what primarily you're spending your time on?
Sure.
And I know that we also had built-in flexibility relative to city work and private work. And I would just be interested to know what that ratio is that's going on currently.
Sure.
Thank you.
So for myself, I'm dealing primarily, I'm the primary person dealing with all of the cannabis HCAs, all the issues with the CCC, working with KP Law as well, with the new regulations that have come into place. That's taken up an enormous amount of my time recently, but it's been kind of ongoing for, I don't know, a couple of years. Also doing collective bargaining together with Kelly Curran and Russell Dupre for our now 10 unions. We were nine, now we're 10. Unfortunately, a lot of them are coming due at the same time. It takes a lot of time to settle these contracts. And unfortunately, by the time we settle them, it feels like we're back to negotiating again. Even though they're three-year contracts, it sometimes takes us a good year and a half to get through them. And then all of a sudden, you know, we're going to be back to negotiating with some of these groups again, like this year, and we just finished their contract. So it is very, very time-consuming to do that. I also deal with all of the personnel issues. It's great to have my office so close to the Personnel Office because we work so closely together on grievances or, you know, employee discipline issues. Those come up a lot, and it's, you know, something we have to deal with right away. Those are probably the things I do the most. I also deal with every single email comes through me, and I try to do as many of them as I can and then push some of the other ones out to everyone else, because I can't do everything, and I don't do everything. That's why we have everybody else that we have. I also do a little bit of the litigation right now. We have a litigation case right now that I'm working on with Kathy Degnan. That, although I can't really talk about it, that has talked, that has taken up an enormous amount of our time. We're two days into a hearing right now. We have probably three more to go. So that's also, takes up a substantial amount of my time. Attorney Degnan is doing all of our procurement. She's, does all, everything that has anything to do with procurement goes through her. She reviews school contracts, she does CPA stuff. She does almost all of the litigation right now. She's involved in a lot of the litigation that we have. And I'll update the whole council on that when I come in in executive session. Assuming we have enough time to go through all of it, I'll try to get the priorities at the top of the list, but...
Hopefully, soon, right?
I, we've been trying to get it scheduled with budget hearings and different things.
It's not that easy, but we will get it scheduled for June. Thank you.
The council president can tell you. I've emailed a couple times trying to, we just can't get it to work, but we will get it to work in June. So I have a lot of things to discuss, and whatever we can't get to, we may have to do a second session. But Attorney Degnan does a lot of the litigation, so that takes up a lot of her time. She also does parking ticket appeals and all of the tort appeals that come through as well, she handles. Attorney Mantaleski does everything with OPED, all of our real estate, everything with planning, and basically picks up a lot of, a lot of the other things that need to be done, whether it's legal opinions, just researching issues for the Water Department. She does an awful lot. But her specialty, I would say, is a lot of the zoning issues and working with the Planning Board as well. She is like the main person that's attending all the Planning Board meetings and is dealing with those particular issues there. Our part-time solicitors, as you know, Mike Bissonette is in for all of the city council meetings, all the subcommittee meetings, all of the, all of the various meetings on boards throughout the city. And also is probably the primary person that works with the DPW Commission. They've got some complicated issues that they're dealing with at DPW, and Mike has really been the point person working with them. And we have one other part-time assistant, and it's actually somebody new that we just hired. We had somebody that had to resign, so we just hired somebody new. She's starting in a couple weeks. She's somebody who used to work for the Springfield Law Department, has municipal law experience, and we're very excited to welcome her onboard. So she doesn't really have any role yet, but I think she's going to be a great addition to the staff.
And what are you looking forward to having her be involved with?
Jeez, I don't know. She's got, she's, she's got experience working in cannabis, although I don't feel like I want to give that up because I've been dealing with it for so long. It's kind of hard to transition, but I think there's a lot of things that she can do. So it's part-time, too, so it's, we'll have to sit down and figure out, like, what the, what the best role will be for her. But she kind of can jump in and do anything. She's, you know, accustomed to going to city council meetings, so that's something she can do, too. Although I think Mike really enjoys that, so I don't know if he wants to give that up. But I think we can find lots of things for her to do.
And this is a little afield, but in the executive, do we need to discuss in executive session the status of the host agreements with the cannabis businesses? Or is that something that can be discussed in open session? Whether they exist, whether they will continue to exist?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, we've been, right now, we've been working with businesses that are either trying to get their business license renewed or they're trying to get a final license. And it's been tricky trying to work with the CCC to figure out what exactly they want. They've been pretty specific with what they want, and so we've had to make decisions about who's getting a host community agreement, who's getting a waiver. There's reasons to do both. And so we've been, we've been giving the model host agreement to businesses in the last couple of weeks, because that seems to be what the CCC wants. And, you know, we're not looking to hold up any businesses from getting, you know, onto the CCC, their agenda, which, you know, it's, they're trying to push some of these businesses because a month delay is a big deal for them. So we're really trying to work with them and help them out.
Right. And we're concerned about the revenue, too. You know, how that's going to look.
In terms of impact fees, or?
And agreements, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's something I'd prefer to, I'd prefer to talk about that in executive session.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Devine?
Yeah, thank you, Lisa, and your department. I didn't realize Mike Bissonette was part-time, because he's certainly everywhere. He's at our meetings, and he did, you did mention that he enjoys them. I don't think he enjoyed it too much last time, getting yelled at, but that's another issue. But I just wanted to thank him, Attorney Degnan and Mantaleski, for everything that they do. They're at our meetings when they need to be. You're at our meetings when they need to be. So I just wanted to thank you, and I'm glad your law department is so big for a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yeah, so Attorney Ball, first of all, I want to thank you for your dedicated service to the city of Holyoke. I'm not going to sit here and micromanage it or interrogate or ask any questions like that, because looking at the budget, you're running a tight ship. You're doing a great job. And I've actually personally, on multiple occasions, have visited your office and see the dedicated work that you and your staff provide to the city of Holyoke. I cannot thank you enough for that service. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions about the budget? I'm not seeing any, so thank you, Lisa. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have Personnel, which is the following page. On page nine, please. Kelly, come on in. And another friendly reminder to everyone, if you're going to be referencing a line item, please mention the object code. And make sure your microphone's on, and then we'll go from there. Kelly, I'll let you, if there's anything you want to highlight, let us know about, and then we'll open it up for questions.
I have a really teeny-tiny budget, so I don't think there's much to highlight. So I'm open to any questions you may have. And I'll just say first, in the Personnel Services, we do have a vacant head administrative clerk that I will be posting for soon. So if you know anybody, send them my way.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. Thanks for coming down. I just have a process question around the job descriptions and the grading of the jobs. I raised it with Aaron last night in the context of OPED. And so a lot of the people have been moved from a reception secretary position to the administrative position. And so I asked him if the jobs have been regraded and duties and responsibilities have been upgraded relative to those changes. And he said he was in process of redoing some of the job descriptions. So I was just wondering if your department is helping departments with that, so that as the role is changing and the duties and along with the grade?
Yeah, so let me know if I'm...
No, go for it.
I have a light voice. So we did an NAGE salary study. Along, we worked with NAGE to do it. And through that, we, it was a lot of outdated titles, like clerk. Not many places use clerk anymore. They do a lot more than just clerical work. So we looked at similar positions in other municipalities, and some were moved to admin assistant or office manager. I think only two of them were office manager. And so some of Aaron's department's positions fell under that, and we gave different department heads who have NAGE staff the opportunity to review their staff's job description. The employee also reviewed it and made recommendations. And then we shared it with the department head. They made recommendations. And so for those NAGE positions, we changed the titles. And Tanya and my team worked together with the Treasurer's Office to create new tables and munis. It's a lot of backend stuff, but yes, new grades and things along that.
And so at a point now or in the near future, will those job descriptions line up with the grade?
Yeah, they do now.
They do now.
Yeah. In NAGE, they do. And Aaron might be trying to change some of his other staff.
Okay.
Yeah. It would definitely come through me. And if it was in another area, we would check with the union and make sure it's okay that they're comfortable with the changes before we made anything permanent.
All right. Thanks a lot.
All right. I see Counselor Jordan's hand is up.
Tell me, good to see you.
Project a little, sorry.
I'm sorry, what's up?
Just, it's still just a little low, so just do your best projection.
Okay. All right. I did not have any really questions about page nine of your budget, but I did want to talk about who's going to speak to us on all the page 49 expenditures.
I couldn't hear him. Did you say 49, Counselor?
Huh?
Did you say page 49? I'm sorry, you sound a little muffled. Yeah, I can speak to, I think, most of them, or...
And I also think that, so we, let me make sure. Anthony Delude is also on the Zoom as well, just in case. And he's on our agenda as well.
Okay. Yeah, retirement is the first one, but there's workers' comp and stuff. So I'm, yeah, Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, so walk, yeah, if you could walk through, let's start with workers. We could start with workers' comp. So I see the request is for $190,000. What was the total amount of claims paid out of this line for this prior year? And where did the 190 number get projected from?
Yeah, so I don't have that on me right now. I could get that to you, but I know that I did request, and my personnel specialist worked with Tanya, to separate these lines, because I was very interested in knowing how much was being paid out in wages versus medical benefits, because we have a lot of injuries, mostly in the DPW and Police Department. The Police Department's covered under IOD, but up above is mostly workers' comp and some admin, like city of Holyoke, city hall staff or annex.
Just to confirm, I'm sorry, just to confirm, this is line item 51999?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot.
That's okay.
Not following the rules.
It's all right.
Um, so, yeah, so I'm very, because a lot of times lately, I think because of our investigations, um, we've had people that are hurt and they're almost right back at work, whereas in the past, they would be out for months. Um, so I think there's a lot more, um, medical claims and less wages being paid out in workers' comp, but I don't have that, that number. I can, I can definitely get it to you, but being short-staffed one person and they had someone out because of a surgery, so we've been, um, a little understaffed in the Personnel Department in the past few months. Um,
I was actually able to go into my notes and the numbers, two-hundred-and-forty-thousand was how much was spent. So my question is, um, of the two-forty, why do you feel it should be fifty thousand less this year?
Fifty thousand less? I, I think there's been less claims. Future Comp has been doing a great job at, um, following up, making sure people are going to their appointments immediately. If there's light duty, they're back at light duty. Um, I, I think it's, it's just, um, a more efficient system this year. And, and also the workers, um, are being supported better and ha- better and have it, being held more accountable for, um, their appointments, keeping their appointments, coming back when they're supposed to, et cetera.
Do we have a Workplace Safety Committee that's meeting regularly yet?
We haven't met lately. We did have one meeting. We have to, um, come back together. Um, one of our brokers was, um, helping lead that with me, but, uh, they were out for a little while too. Um, and I was out for a little while, so we have to get that back together.
Do you feel we have a plan in place to effectively manage workplace injuries? It seems that we have an awful lot of them and we have millions, uh, being spent every year between disability, retirements and other work-related injuries. Um, obviously, this is only a small portion of the overall. Um, do you feel we have a, uh, an appropriate system in place to protect taxpayers?
I feel like we are moving towards a system. I know, um, Fritz, the safety person at the DPW, um, got a grant and they're planning some, um, safety training down there. So I'm excited to see that. Um, but I, I do think that Future Comp, our new workers' comp, um, TPA is, um, doing a great job at making sure, again, we're following up immediately. People, when I first got into the position, people were out. No one knew when they were coming back. No one knew the date of injury. They were just pretty much on vacation. Um, and so, you know, this year, I think there's a better grip on that. And there's less injuries with the trash carts because they're not lifting them.
Can you give, uh, the city council a three-year analysis that shows workers' comp and that it's trending downwards so that we can show taxpayers it's getting better?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just want to flag that.
I have other questions, Madam President, but I'll stop there if others, uh, have questions for the Personnel.
All right. We can pause for a minute and see if, uh, other councilors have questions. I'm not seeing any, so Councilor Jordan, the floor is yours.
Yep. I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to ask their questions.
Thank you.
Relative to, uh, health insurance, um, can, is, are we going to be receiving the report that the Treasurer had said he was going to send out on the increase of over a million dollars on health insurance? I have not seen an email that comes in substantiating the million-dollar increase yet.
Um, I, I can work with him on that. I know he spoke to it, um, during his, his report, but I can definitely check in with him on that. I know, um, the brokers are working with, um, Blue Cross to try to firm up the, the numbers, um, so I can include you in those correspondences.
Yeah, I, I was the person who asked the questions, um, and, uh, relative to the Treasurer on this topic. And I was supposed to receive follow-up, so that's what this process is supposed to be, is I ask questions, we make requests for information. I, I need materials and facts to do my job. So I would appreciate, especially when you have a line item that big increasing, I, I would like to have an opportunity to analyze that, please.
Absolutely. I'll check in with him.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Like to talk to you about FICA for a minute, please. That's a couple lines down. This is line item also five-one-nine-nine. I see there's a proposed increase of three-hundred-thousand. Is there a reason we think FICA is going to go up three-hundred grand?
I honestly couldn't answer that. I haven't been involved with, um, FICA. I would defer to Tanya or Rory, Rory on that.
Is Tanya with us tonight or no?
Uh, no, not, not in chambers and not online.
All right. I'll have to follow up via email. Um, city liability and damage insurance? That's line item fifty-seven-four-hundred. Can you please explain why, uh, the increase to nine-hundred thousand for the city's liability insurances?
So I think this, um, falls under procurement. I know Jamie was working on, um, having a new broker for this, so I would defer to procurement.
Okay. Is she, is she scheduled for tonight? I don't know.
She was scheduled for last night.
Last night.
Oh, she was last night. All right. I'll have to follow up by email. Short-term disability, uh, is scheduled for a twelve-thousand-dollar increase. Are we expecting?
What line item, please?
It's fifty-seven-four-eight.
Fifty-seven-four-nine. That's two down from the last one. And it's, uh, about scheduled to be twelve-thousand more than the prior year. Kelly, why are we projecting more searches?
So I think it was under-budgeted in the prior year. Um, and when we give them the census, they update how much is due. So, um, PSA, DPW laborers, DPW supervisors in Schedule A are all covered. So as, um, vacancies fill or become vacant, um, we, you know, update our census and they go by the number, those numbers. But I think we were under-budgeted last year.
According to the auditor's report, as of, uh, May twenty-first, we'd spent thirty-five-thousand dollars out of this account. That's, uh, eight days ago. So I guess it seems that it's at budget. Why would we need an additional twelve thousand? It doesn't appear that we're spending more this year.
If it was?
Could you look into that?
Yeah, I could look into it, but if it was paid up until May, we have June, uh, or paid up into April, we have May and June. But I will look into it and email you all.
Medical claims for the, uh, Police Department, that's line fifty-seven-six-forty?
Yep.
We had, uh, budgeted last year, two-hundred-thousand dollars in this line. The request is to give it equal funding again for this year. Why? Based on the, uh, fact that we also pulled out eighty-four thousand dollars out of this account this year.
I didn't adjust this line, so I'm not sure why, but I'm hoping that the injuries are decreased. But we did see a lot of injuries in the Police Department this year.
Right now, we're on five-seven-six-four-zero. Page forty-nine.
Page forty-nine.
Medical claims, police and fire. It's about halfway through the page, down the page.
Okay. Do they review that line with you before they would make a transfer out of that for the eighty-four thousand dollars?
I, I haven't discussed this with anyone. Um, if there was money needed, my Personnel Specialist would request a transfer.
Okay. But if they were to take money out of this account, would they also seek your permission?
I would hope so, but I haven't seen anything.
I, I don't think that that's anything we pay. I, I think that's the insurance that we pay for police and fire and those medical coins. We're paying the, but we, we can confirm that. I don't think that's anything going out directly that, you know, transfer going to a line item, but instead a bill we're paying when these claims come forward. Um, but we'll confirm that.
According to the audit report, Mayor, eighty-four thousand was transferred out of the account. That's not an expenditure. That was a, a removal from the account of eighty-four thousand and sixteen dollars.
Yep.
And so I guess it, the new appropriate, the revised budget was a hundred and fifteen-nine-eight-four from what the council had approved of two-hundred. And I guess my point is, if we only need one-sixteen, then I'd only want to budget one-sixteen.
I, I can look into it, but I, I haven't known anything to be transferred out unless maybe workers' comp was underfunded. I would, I have to check though.
Okay. Thank you. Um, in terms of the income replacement plan, that's line item five-one-nine-fifty, the next line down, uh, those leave buybacks. Can you kind of talk to us a little bit about how that's working and why do you feel we need a hundred thousand dollars again this year?
I'm not sure. I've, I don't think I'm in charge of this line because it's never been discussed with me.
Income replacement plan.
Okay. Who, who would be in charge of that line, please?
I would, I would defer to Tanya.
Yeah, that's a good.
Come on.
I know the DPW has income replacement in their, um, their contract, so this might be that, but I don't, I don't think so.
Yeah, I think that's Tanya's question.
Yeah, I would defer to Tanya on that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else? Great. Thank you so much, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
Have a good night.
Um, you too. Thank you. Um, up next, we have the Veterans Services Department, which is page forty-four-zero.
Is Melissa online?
Nope.
So she's not here.
She's not here. Okay. So she's not here right now, so we're gonna, we're gonna move forward on Veterans Services and go to, uh, Retirement Board is next on our agenda. And so we can stay on page forty-nine, but there's also, uh, Tony Delude sent us this document before tonight's meeting. It should be on your desk. Um, Tony, are you with us? I saw you. There you go. Okay. Um, thank you for being here. We appreciate you being available, uh, to answer any questions. Um, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, uh, Tony. And if there's anything you want to highlight for us, um, please do. Uh, otherwise, we will, uh, open it up for questions from councilors. Forty-nine. Page forty-nine. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. Let's see if that works.
Okay. How's that? Better?
There we go. Perfect. How are you?
Okay. Perfect. Good. So each year, the city, uh, pays a portion for appropriations. This year, I had sent a letter before for the COLA and I had you sixty-seven-point-two-five percent for total appropriation. That figures high. What we're going to do is, it's going to go down to sixty-five-point-one-three is the city portion share. That's about four-hundred-thousand less than the previous year. So based on that, with the COLA increase of about thirty-thousand, you're going to be about twelve million, five-hundred and, about ninety thousand dollars for the total year. So that really is a, a decrease from the previous year. And we can reflect that in the budget and I can talk to Tanya and we can get that with the mayor too. And, um, so everything will be fine there. Um, that's about the only thing that I have that goes through the city budget. Um, if there's any questions from the council, they can ask me now if, if you'd like.
Mayor, do you want to add anything?
I was just going to, that number that we're looking at right now?
Yep.
It's going down, you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah. I had, we had projected about twelve million-nine, but the percentage actually I had from the previous year, sixty-seven-point-two-five percent of the total appropriation. The city went down to sixty-five-point-one-three. So the total's going to be twelve-five-three-two-nine-four-seven. So that's, um, probably about a four-hundred-thousand-dollar decrease.
Well, the number in front of us is twelve million, five-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand, forty-three dollars.
Perfect. That's it. That's it. That's the number. Yep. But I wrote a letter for the finance a couple of weeks ago and projected the, uh, a, a higher percentage. So the number you have is perfect, what you have.
Thank you. Um, councilors, do you have questions? Councilor Jordan has his hand up. Go for it.
Yeah, just, just briefly, I just think it bears stating, um, you know, one, I really appreciate the work that Tony does and his team on the Retirement Board. Um, I think they've done a really excellent job of investing our funds. And, uh, you know, they're a huge segment of the overall budget. So I did want to give some kudos to, to Tony, uh, personally. Um, I appreciate their due diligence up there and, um, it, it means a lot to me. Um, I think that they continue to be benchmarked and, uh, versus what PARAC and the state is doing. Uh, they continue to outperform those benchmarks. Um, I also think that, you know, we're on a challenging, uh, but yet meaningful path to be fully funded by tw- uh, twenty-thirty-three. And, uh, that's going to be important for the city's future. Then at that point, although that's going to be a challenge over the next nine years or so, um, you know, we're going to get to the point of being fully funded. And not every community can say that. So, um, this is something that we actually developed a strong plan, executed on the plan, and, uh, the taxpayers can know that, you know, this is being taken care of. So I, I do appreciate what the Retirement Board is doing in this regard and if there is, uh, stated because the numbers are so big.
Thank you.
Mayor, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, so I just want to, absolutely. Um, this is a, a mandate from the Commonwealth, cities and towns, uh, everywhere to fully fund. So you've got communities that are on schedule. But just to be clear, and, and, you know, um, oh my God, Delude can, can correct me if I'm wrong here. There is a dollar amount that we budget for, to pay out our normal retirement. And then there's what we're putting on top of that to be on schedule to fully fund and put money into savings account. That's an extra on top of what we're obligated to pay for those that are receiving, um, retirement payment. On top of that is another additional eight million dollars. And so, yeah, it, I think it's going to be huge for the city, not just to be fully funded and say that we, we did it, but also we'll have now eight million, which at that point, whoever is in charge, there's going to be a new conversation about, um, uh, starting a schedule to invest in OPED. I just thought that was an important point because not a lot of people know that. We are budgeting an extra eight million dollars of taxpayer money annually to stay on schedule. And why that's important to note, costs are going up with different departments. We hear every year throughout history, different departments, DPW, fire, police, schools, costs continuing to go up, and we're pointing fingers at them, being responsible. and we're pointing fingers at them being responsible for the high increase here. Instead, we have this unfunded mandate. If we didn't have to pay that, we'd have an eight million dollar surplus probably at the moment. Um, but I thought, you know, again, I, not a lot of people, when I learned of this, you know, it's not anything that's, that's understood or even talked about for that matter. Um, uh, but just important for folks to understand that this schedule is costing taxpayers an additional eight million dollars on top of what we're obligated to pay out for those that are collecting retirement.
Thank you, anyone else with questions? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to say thank you, Tony, for being here.
Thank you, thank you, City Council.
Appreciate your time.
Good job, so.
Have a great rest of your night.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda is the War Memorial Building. So that is page forty-five, for those of you come on in. That's right. We're joined by Lottie and, uh, Rick and Carl's coming in. So feel free to sit wherever it's open, Counselor Rivera's seat is open as well.
I'm just here for emotional support.
Okay, whatever you need, you're welcome to sit though. Um, all right, so, again, we are on page forty. And just a reminder, yep, Mayor, do you need?
No, no, just give me one sec.
Oh, okay. Um, just a reminder, if you are referencing a specific line item, please reference the object code number so that we can follow along. Um, and, uh, I will turn it over to whomever wants to kick it off, and then we'll open it up for questions, just make sure, yeah, that the green button is
Madam Chair?
Lit up, yes.
Are we on forty or forty-five? Do you say both numbers?
I'm sorry, I got, I was looking at the wrong line, forty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's the War Memorial Commission, my bad. All right, um, with that, go for it.
Excellent, thank you. Um, so our budget, I, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, um, there wasn't too much movement between any of the departments, um, or any of the, um, object codes within the personal expenses. Um, I do believe there is going to be a change, um, regarding the building custodian. Um, I did not get the exact percentage of what raises will be, um, so I'm not sure if that's already incorporated in that line item or not. Um, but that's the only figure that I was not able to capitalize on and really figure, I think what is currently listed on the page is accurate, um, and that's about a four thousand dollar increase from our budget last year.
And the building custodian line item for those following along is five one one zero two.
Correct. So our budgeted was forty thousand two hundred and eighty-nine, and I believe the increase was for forty-four thousand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, for our expenses, again, um, our values significantly stayed the same, um, there were some minor increases and a few, um, object codes, but not drastically. Um, one line item that we did not include, um, that after, um, submitting and reviewing the budget um, upon the, uh, change in duty with Sean Sheedy with Department of Public Works is, um, we really do feel that line item five two four two, um, could be increased to a thousand dollars. Um, this is again to help with any supplies that we're in need of inside the War Memorial so that we can have a stockpile current state. What we're doing is we are um, going to the DPW department requesting it from their main fund and allocating it that it came out to the War Memorial. Um, if we were able to make an edit to that line item five two four one for, um, a thousand dollars, that would be to directly have a on-hand supply at the War Memorial for our, um, maintenance, cleaning, um, and things of that nature. Um, other than that, um, all of the other buckets, um, pretty much have remained the same. Um, we do have a wish list that we did not include for our budget. Um, we're hoping to be able to work with, um, granting from different grants throughout the City of Holyoke. Um, I have also been working along with a lot of, uh, private venues and assistance from the community. Um, I am proud to say that this year we did bring in some revenue to help with the deficit, the deficit that we've had from the building custodians. Um, as you know, that we had some repairs that were outside of our control, um, that we had to allocate extra funding for our custodians to be paid for overtime hours. Um, so I think that being able to really bring in some external revenue, um, to help offset the price of what we're paying our custodians to cover our space would be really helpful to the City of Holyoke.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Counselor Grinny and then Counselor Devine.
And just quickly, I don't know if, he could, but could the Mayor, uh, amend that, that line item tonight? While he's sitting here, for a thousand dollars? I think that would be appropriate, we could wrap that up.
I, I wouldn't be, I'd have to submit another order to the council, so you can, and we can, we can do that. Um, I just gotta make sure I, I get it in time for your scheduled meetings leading up to Voting Day of the full budget.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Devine?
Yeah, you answered my question I was gonna have on overtime, so thank you. And I just wanted to thank you for, and your staff, for the Memorial Day um, services at the War Memorial, it was very nice, and, uh, you, you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Remind what the thousand dollars was for?
Um, for line item five two four two zero, to be able to have our cleaning supplies and be able to buy additional equipment needed to maintain the building.
Repair, maintenance, repair?
Yes, repair and, repair and maintenance, other.
Oh, there's nothing there.
Yes, it's at zero, um, and we wanted to rephrase that from other to supplies. To be more specific.
I'm wondering if that's anything, DPW, we don't have, uh, supplies line item for cleaning and things of that nature?
No, we get it out of R and M. Everything comes R and M.
We'll look into it.
All right, sorry. Okay, other counselors. Uh, I'm sorry, I had you on the list, Counselor McGrath Smith.
I was looking at the building when we were on the stage on Monday, and it's really a unique space. Uh, the design of it is something that you just don't see elsewhere. And I'm sure, of course, that comes with additional costs. Nothing in it is turnkey, everything is of the specific design of the era. Um, and is beautifully rendered to be a patriotic symbol in the space, uh, which is the glory of it. Um, but also I can see that you have, you know, under capital outlay for building improvements, there was a line item uh, that was expended of seven thousand eight, eighty dollars, uh, this past year, and I'm wondering, uh, is it out of capital stabilization, are there other things that you see coming forward that you will need? I know there's been issues, um, with maintaining the light structures, and I know because I have a background in theater, even getting up to change light bulbs in a ceiling that high is not easy. It's not just a, we're gonna send some over to quickly turn a few bulbs in. Um, or even the speaker system, um, which I know has been talked about for several years. So I just wonder if there are capital improvements coming for the space, and if it's not coming out of the capital outlay line here, this budget, then where do we see that coming from?
So Lottie can go over some of the capital needs of the building, but just so you know, any capital needs for any of our, um, departments, we, it's a different strategy, we don't necessarily, we don't raise and appropriate. The strategy we've put together currently is, um, you know, we got capital stabilization, we put money in there, and as we understand what the needs are, we put forward those needs in front of the council, and we go to Finance Committee and review them accordingly, so there's no, actually, in, in any, um, to my knowledge right now, in any department budget, large capital expenses for, you know, infrastructure. Um, but Lottie has, and the board has been working on their list. Um, I'm still waiting for that list. But you're not late, so don't worry. Um, and she can certainly share, um, what some of the assessed needs are. One, currently, it's already been supported by the council and it's still in pursuit, and Lottie can probably offer an update, or maybe Carl, the elevator that was in disrepair, uh, large capital, uh, expense there. But, Lottie, if there are others you want to share?
Yes, there's, there's definitely others, um, and just seeing in the position that we were currently in, um, I felt selfish asking for anything else that was already allocated to us, to be quite frank. Um, but some of the things that we have discussed, again, with the help of the DPW, as well as the assistance that we've had from the tenants that we have in the space, um, really looking for the natural facelift that the War Memorial needs. Um, we are not able to preserve the building, and we don't have enough revenue to do the additional projects that we need, so that the the funds are not coming out of the City of Holyoke. Um, we're looking for, um, doing a facelift in the entire space, um, for painting. We have already started to work on the door labeling and using historical labeling for our keys to make sure that the building is secure. Um, we have a plan and we are working on grants and looking for upgrades in the blinds to make sure that the entire structure is uniform with blinds. Um, the lighting, which is definitely one of the biggest issues that we have. Um, we did start putting in some ticket orders, so I'm not sure if you can confirm if, um, our lighting was repaired, um, through DPW, we're trying to do that in-house versus trying to contract out, because those lights are so sensitive. Um, but we can use commercial lighting, um, it's just a matter of how we get up there, we really have to rent the equipment, so that is definitely gonna be in a lift, yeah. So the lift is what costs more, getting the light bulbs is not a big deal, but it's more of the lift, um, to really get that general maintenance going. Um, we also, um, again, the biggest thing that we need to do is we had some leaks, um, in our basement. Um, we were really hoping to be able to get that completely repaired prior to the summer coming. Now that the heating system is off and the AC unit is on, it does buy us some time, so we won't have to exhaust any overtime, um, or worry about any leaking, but that is one of the biggest concerns that we have, that it's gonna take a lot of structural work uh, to be able to get that done. We have some amazing quotes with some local, um, vendors and local, um, constructions, if that's what the word is, to really work on that, so that is one of the, the other items that we have there. Um, being able to adequately, sorry, I have a long list, being able to adequately clean up all these spaces, organize them, create a workflow that allows for, um, our commissioners to uphold the building and be able to ex- exhaust their time to bring in tenants, is what's gonna keep the revolving use of the building open. Um, we do believe that if we collaborate with our city members and with DPW, that we'll be able to, again, work on maintaining and upkeeping our air C, AC compressors, our lighting, and also work with getting our stage uplifted for musical equipment to be, um, utilized. Um, we have received a couple quotes within twenty-five thousand or so dollars for some of our musical equipment, but we have received quotes as high as two hundred and twenty thousand. Um, so we are really looking to make sure that we get a good bang for our buck for what is needed. Um, we saw, we have also looked at what currently exists for other War Memorials across different states and cities and what they're doing, just to see if we can get some comparisons for that. Um, the building leak was estimated about forty K or so, um, but we do have three quotes already in place for that. Um, the roof, again, is one of the biggest concerns that we also have, um, the roof is estimated at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I believe that that's already been worked on and allocated um, through separate, um, entity outside of this. Um, but I think that what our plan is, is to work from the way, from the top to the way down. Um, and being really able to get more personnel to volunteer, being able to have, um, bring in more revenue by the private events that we're having, that are hosting, um, we are really able to kind of open the appetite of the community to want to rent the space for a cost, or be able to obtain more grants to really help us to maintain the beauty of the building.
Thank you. Great. Uh, other, any other questions from counselors? Alrighty. I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate all that you do.
That was easy.
Awesome. Moving forward on the agenda, School Department is next, and that is page twenty-eight. We do have, uh, the city auditor is online with us as well. Um, Tanya, there were some questions before, um, from Counselor Jordan uh, related to page forty-nine. Um, I want to also, though, be mindful of the, the school committees, uh, the school department's time. Um, so, uh, you know, we'll, we'll open up some, some time for that in a little bit.
Thank you.
But, um, I'd, I'd like to move forward with what's on our scheduled agenda.
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor.
I can take my questions offline with the auditor.
Oh, okay.
That doesn't need to be handled tonight.
Okay, all right, thank you, Counselor. So we are joined this evening by, uh, our Superintendent Receiver, Anthony Soto. Um, and I believe Sean is also on Zoom.
Yes.
Thank you both for being here.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to, uh, just provide a little context to our budget for next year. Um, I did ahead of time send, uh, a presentation, we did present our budget to the school committee last night. Um, we went through every single line item in detail. Um, it was about, you know, two and a half hour meeting. I don't anticipate, uh, going through the entire presentation, I want to be respectful of everybody's time here and all the department heads that, that follow, uh, this presentation, but I do want to, you know, provide some, some opening context and some final thoughts on our budget, and then allow for um, some questions, and, um, as, uh, Ms. Murphy Rumbelletti, uh, alluded, I do have Sean Mangano on, online as well, uh, if, if any questions come up, he'll be able to come off mic. Um, first and foremost, I just want to say that this budget was, uh, developed, um, placing our students first and is, is really designed to achieve our mission, which is to ensure that all students develop the skills and access the opportunities to graduate high school ready-for-life career and college. Um, and as everything we do, it's, it's grounded in our strategic plan. Our strategic plan was a process we went through a few years ago, we got uh, sixteen hundred different people provided input on our strategic plan, we had over sixty me- meetings across the city, both virtually and in-person and through focus groups that helped really develop a plan that we call, um, Together for Holyoke. Um, and in that plan, we were able to develop some core beliefs, we were able to design what our vision is for Holyoke Public Schools, our mission. We worked on some equity commitments and, and then, uh, established some, some key priorities that we wanted to focus on to best support our, our staff and our students. Um, our vision is that HPS is a high-performing school system where students reach their full potential, educators inspire, families are partners, and the community thrives. Um, and I already talked about our mission. I, we do have a bunch of core beliefs, but I, I just want to lift one of them for the council today, and that, and that's that students are at the center of everything that we do. Um, part of that was also developing our equity commitments, we have about eight of them, and, and the only one I wanted to lift today is that we ensure that students, families, and staff get the support they need to be successful, and that's what our resource allocation and our budget development process is really geared towards. Um, the five priorities that we have are, uh, early literacy and ensuring that all students in grades pre-K to three read at grade level, uh, learning experiences, inclusion, whole child and educator development. And I want to name that, like, the, over the last few years, we have really been focused on the, the top pri- priorities in, in that pie chart, which is early literacy and learning experiences. Um, you know, we're in the middle of, we, we went through extensive professional learning for our K to two teachers, and, uh, uh, put a, a heavy emphasis on being able to to, uh, educate our and provide professional learning opportunities for our building leaders and our instructional teams, so that they can really focus on, on improving the quality of teaching and the experiences that kids are getting in classrooms. Um, this year in particular, we did have a huge initiative on in- inclusion and making sure that our diverse learners are getting the supports that they need in the classroom, not always getting pulled out. Uh, but part of that model was really, uh, you know, at increasing the amount of special education and ELL teachers that we have. Uh, what we didn't, what we couldn't foresee is the staffing market, so admittedly, we had about seventy vacancies all year, seventy teacher vacancies. Um, and that, you know, part of us balancing the budget this, um, upcoming school year was to just be a real, be realistic about how many teachers we can hire and rethink how we can still provide those inclusion opportunities for our students without, um, all the extra, uh, vacant positions that we really can't fill in this day and age. Um, but admittedly, we, we needed to shift our focus, and I think, you know, now we have common curriculum across the district, we have common instructional strategies that help principals and coaches uh, really develop teachers, um, and, and help them plan quality, quality lessons. Um, and, and those things are in place, and, and the, the thing that we, we need to get better at is the other priority of whole child and educator development, and, you know, uh, a lot of, a lot of our work in the upcoming years to focus on school cultures, And, you know, uh, a lot of, a lot of our work in the upcoming years to focus on school cultures so that all the learning that we want to see happening and all the professional development that we're investing in can actually happen. So we have strong cultures in our schools. And uh, we just recently put a, a, a teacher retention work group together. They um, you know, they met uh, over the course of about five, five to seven meetings. We got a lot of input on what could we do to better retain particularly experienced teachers. Um, and they provided me with a lot of great recommendations that we've, we've already started to implement in hopes that, you know, people that come to Holyoke, they stay longer than three years. You know, they come to Holyoke, they get really good experience and then other communities tend to try to scoop them up after they get trained, you know, after a couple of years. And we really want to um, we want to encourage staff and provide them with the, the opportunities to, to want to stay in Holyoke. And, and a lot of that has to do with uh, really building strong school cultures. Um, some of the feedback that we got from our teachers was that we're trying to do too much. We have so many priorities, we have so many initiatives and our leadership team really uh, really took that to heart. And we've been working over the last come, uh, couple of months, trying to figure out, okay, how can we uh, narrow our focus areas so that it's real clear to, to teachers? Um, what we, what, what our professional development is going to look like and what our focus areas are. And really, um, we settled on three and, and uh, one of them is going to be delivering high-quality lessons to ensure all students develop grade-level skills and are supported to reach grade-level expectations. That is, um, you know, we, we have to teach our kids at grade level. And just like tonight, I had to plan to present, I'm sure a lot of you had to plan for what questions you were going to have. We have to make sure that our teachers have the time and, and, and can plan quality lessons so that uh, when they show up in classrooms, it's reflected in their teaching and, and students get a, a much better experience. So a lot of our professional development is going to be geared at high-quality lessons from teachers. And um, the second piece of that is really using instructional feedback and student data to identify what students know, what they need and adjust accordingly. So part of the, pairing the planning with the data, we can't just uh, assume that our plan went according to, to uh, i- is working. We have to look at what students know, look at student data and then go back and, and adjust our practices. So a lot of our professional development is going to be geared at high-quality lessons and making sure we're looking at student data and then using that student data to uh, to inform the lesson, the lesson plans um, and adjust any reteach plans and stuff like that. So, y- you know, those are real, really two key things on the instructional side that we're going to be focusing on. And then the third one is around whole child, which is to execute school-wide systems and classroom strategies to promote student connection and positive learning behaviors. That, that's an area where I feel that um, we need to uh, we need to refocus on. Um, we've, we've been so focused on, on curriculum and instructional strategies and, and making sure all those things are in place that we, we, we have, we need to refocus on school-wide systems to support positive learning environments and behaviors. Really proud of some of the investments we were able to make in the FY twenty-five budget. Um, you know, uh, happy to report that we have a brand-new contract for our paraprofessionals, for our clerical staff, for our APs and deans, our therapists, our, and our custodians and craft people. Those are all collective bargaining agreements that we've negotiated this current fiscal year and have settled and um, will be reflected in the FY twenty-five budget in our salary line. I've said this before to the council and, and I just want to reiterate that, you know, if you look around at surrounding communities, you're noticing that there's a lot of cuts in programming, there's a lot of massive teacher layoffs and things of that sort. And the reason is, is because um, we had federal funding dollars for three years and, and uh, in, in my opinion, in, in some, some towns, they didn't really think when that money went away, what the impact was going to be on their budget. We had the foresight to be able to say, how are we going to use this federal money in a way that accelerates some of the things that we want to do with the Student Opportunity Act funds? Um, and, and not be in a position where we have a huge funding cliff in FY twenty, in, in next year, when, when that money goes away. So uh, what we did with that was, was we invested in uh, additional school counselors. Um, you know, so we have, we now have uh, an additional adjustment counselor at every single one of our schools. Um, we invested in academic intervention teachers, those were positions that we didn't have um, since I had been here. So those uh, are teachers that are not necessarily um, you know, i- in a, in a full classroom all day. They're pulling small groups of students that, that need uh, accelerated learning and, and helping them close the gap. Uh, we've also invested in expert teachers, which are essentially coaches, they're a part of the instructional leadership team. And um, you know, with a district that has over fifty-one percent of their teachers in their first three years, it's really important that we have um, expert teachers and coaches to help improve the quality of teaching and, and teachers get the support that they need to improve their practice. Um, you know, uh, deans of management and ops, that was an investment that we made. Uh, we made a commitment three years ago that we wanted our principals and APs to be instructional leaders. We didn't, we didn't want them to be firefighters and just dealing with the day-to-day operations. And uh, you know, with our partnership with Relay who, uh, or, or the Bar Foundation, they gave us seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to help our leaders go through an instructional leadership program. Uh, the deans of management and ops was an investment that we made so that we have a dedicated person to deal with, you know, the lunch duty and the arrival and dismissal procedures and the budget development and procurement process and things of that nature. And the principals, they can then switch their focus to what's going on in the classroom. Um, we've been able to enhance translation and interpretation, special education services, um, after-school programming and preschool services. Most recently, we, you know, we made an investment in uh, as part of the teacher retention work group that I mentioned um, earlier. One of the things that we changed was the schedule for next year and, and compensating high schools. So we've always had a different schedule for our high school teachers and our elementary and middle. Um, and elementary and middle school teachers actually worked about, you know, I want to say an hour and a half more a week than the high school teachers did. And, and a lot of the feedback that we got from our teachers was that, you know, uh, you know, work-life bal- balance matters to them and, you know, many teachers are leaving to other communities, not for more money, but because they work less hours. You know, we, we were having teachers come back for about, you know, two, two and a half hours of professional development every week. Um, and that's, that's a big difference for a teacher that, you know, that really values work-life balance, that may have kids, that are playing sports and things of that nature. So what, part of the change that we're making for next year is that we were, we are reducing the amount of time that, that teachers are working and um, and, and, and investing more into mentor stipends as well. So I, I, I continue to hear, since I was here, like, we used, you know, from teachers, we used to have mentors, like, what happened to them? And uh, one of the things that we are investing in next year is uh, stipends for uh, to have mentor teachers work with our first-year teachers. So we hope that every single first-year teacher in the, in the Holyoke Public Schools is paired up with a mentor uh, that they get to meet with on a weekly basis and we're compensating those teachers to do that work. Uh, we've made sig- we're making significant improvements in, in technology. Um, our servers are really at the end of their useful life, we've had them for about seven years. Um, and you know, uh, through our own operating budget and through the E-rate program, we're going to be replacing all of our servers and hopefully getting another seven or eight years out of them and our switches, which will help improve the quality of the internet, which was some feedback that we got back from staff as well. We're also investing in uh, teacher devices. So our teacher devices right now are about four years old. So our plan next year is to make sure that every single teacher has a brand-new computer. Um, and uh, uh, students in grades K, K through five as well will have brand-new computers and we'll, we'll, we, we end up leasing them. So we'll, we'll get into a replacement cycle with them where, where uh, every four years they're, they're replaced. Um, I mentioned, you know, an investment we're making next year is, is around our MTSS system, so multi-tiered systems of supports. Um, we've invested in additional behavior positions dedicated to supporting students. Um, and some of the facilities improvements, I do want to thank the, the council, you know, we currently have an ongoing construction project with a new middle school. Uh, our plant, we, we're getting brand-new windows and doors at Lawrence, Dunnehew and McMahon. Anyone who has driven by McMahon, you can see, you know, the windows are really cloudy and like, they, they're just, the, windows make a huge difference, get a lot of natural light into the classroom and it just feels, um, it feels like a brand-new school when you have new windows and doors and I'm excited for those projects. And then um, we're also planning on making significant upgrades to our HVAC and boiler systems at uh, Dean, McMahon, Sullivan, Ian White, Morgan and Dunnehew. Those bids are currently out on the street, you know, um, if, if they come back too expensive, then we may have to, you know, pick and choose which, you know, uh, maybe have to drop a school or something like that. But those are, those are part of our plans and we're um, that we have for facilities uh, improvements next year. Um, on the revenue side, we're seeing about an increase of five-point-six million or, or five percent. Um, and that's really the Student Opportunity Act. We are in year four next year of the Student Opportunity Act. Uh, essentially what that means is that we're getting more money for um, econom- economically disadvantaged students. So every district, um, the districts that have a high concentration of economically disadvantaged students are getting a lot more money um, than they were in the past. If it were fully implemented, it probably would have been a tw- twenty-six million dollar incre- increase, but the state can't afford that, so they're, they're implementing it over a six-year period, um, which is why we saw an increase of about five-point-six million. Um, a big thing that, you know, is, is, is of concern to us is our transportation budget. That's going up about one-point-five million or fifteen percent. Even that number right there, we're going to have to work really hard. We're going to have to work really hard to try to manage to that number because we're trending a little higher than that. Um, there are some things that are out of our control and then the things that are in our control, we have to make sure we're being, um, you know, we, we, we put measures in place to control them. So uh, i- as an example, like, our, our wheelchair transportation budget is going up pretty significantly. Um, we cannot control the amount of students that either move into Holyoke or enter kindergarten that require wheelchair transportation. So uh, whereas uh, last year we only needed five vans for wheelchair, next year we're going to, or this, this year we're, we're up to like ten vans. So that's an example of something that we really can't control. Um, um, and the, the other piece is around out-of-district special education. So if we have special education students and they happen to be displaced uh, for whatever reason, uh, we're still legally responsible for wherever they move to, for um, going to pick them up and bringing them to our school. And uh, things like that, we're, we're, we're just, we are trying to be smarter. So I, you know, I know one of our out-of-district schools, for example, has eleven vans, right? So it's probably a lot less expensive instead of having um, eleven vans to maybe do uh, for four minibus. Um, because you could fit more kids on minibus. So those are some strategies that we're trying to work on in the upcoming school year to help uh, minimize the impact of the uh, increase in, in the transportation costs. And I mentioned earlier that, you know, other communities are having to make cuts in funding and that's true. Uh, one, we've planned for this funding cliff. Um, one of the things that I, I also mentioned earlier is that we had a lot of, of vacancies. So uh, part of our strategy to balance this budget is to uh, use some of our general fund carryover funds to help uh, not, I, I don't want to say kick the can down the road, but we do know that Student Opportunity Act is going to give us an increase in general fund money next year, right? So um, instead of making some severe deep cuts now, we, we're, we're strategizing to, to have another year of Student Opportunity Act money to, to help um, you know, stave off that fun- funding cliff. Uh, but once we're fully implemented with the Student Opportunity Act, I think we're going to be in, in pretty good shape. And um, this year was, you know, while initially we thought it was going to be uh, you know, really bad, um, it, it's, it's not as good as it's been with having all the federal dollars, but um, we were able to keep all the core services that we want, all the investments that we made on ESER that we feel are having an, an impact on teaching and learning and student experiences. Um, we were able to keep um, all that in place. Uh, the state did, you know, one of the things this, the state had asked me a couple of years ago was we, uh, if we needed any grant money to help with the budget. And at the time I told them, you know, because we have this, these federal dollars, we don't need that money, but trust and believe in FY twenty-five, when this money goes away, we are going to be needing some of that grant money. And the commissioner has agreed to give us uh, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to help us with next year's budget. Um, so he followed through on his promise a couple of years ago to, to, to deliver on that and that's helping us balance our budget for next year as well. I didn't want to go through uh, every line item because I want to, I want to respect everyone's time, but I, I, I want to close with um, a few things, so I'm going to skip. It's got to be an easier way. Okay, here we go. So my final thoughts, you know, um, everyone, everybody knows that we're working on a transition plan to local control and um, I've, I've been working really closely with, with the school committee and, and on this plan. We've had uh, several meetings already with the commissioner to talk about what the plan is going to look like. Uh, we do need to get some feedback on that plan and hopefully there will be a plan in, in August that'll be released. But as it relates to budget, we've had a lot of conversations with, with the school committee around how their role is going to change on, on budget and what are some things that they want to keep. And one of the things that, you know, we, we agreed to was making sure that we have an equitable method for allocating resources. When I first got here, I can tell you from experience that that wasn't the case. There were some schools that were getting taken care of and then there were some schools that were not getting taken care of. And what we've done to address that is we've come up with an allocation model. So it's, it's primarily driven on your student population, how many students you have, um, how many students you have that are English learners or diverse learners. And we've come up with an equitable way to say like, every school is going to get this. Um, we have target class sizes and, and I think that that's something that really the school committee wants to embrace. Uh, at least they've expressed that. You know, um, if you have this many students, this is how many counselors you should have. Um, this is uh, you know, one of the positions we added was a family engagement coordinator to every school. Those are, those are some things that I feel the school committee is going to continue to embrace. And then on the teaching side, I did talk about our um, uh, our coaches, our literacy and math coaches and our intervention positions, um, and maintaining the class sizes that, that we set out. We don't have huge class sizes. You know, there wa- there was a time I, I, you know, uh, I recall, I was reading the minutes from our nineteen-eighty-three school committee uh, meeting at the request of the mayor. Um, and one of the things in there that I saw, there were some schools that had ki- forty kids in, in a classroom back then and, and um, we don't have that, you know, we, our average class size is probably closer to, to twenty when you, when you um, factor everything, but it, it varies by grade. We want to make sure that um, every school has art and every school has music, so we've been able to allocate art and music to all of our schools. Um, and those are some of the investments that I think that, that the school committee is going to want to continue. Figured uh, 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 final thoughts, really, the, the Student Opportunity is going to con- Act is going to continue to uh, help with, with this funding cliff and is going to provide us two more years of, of chapter seventy increases. Um, we didn't have any major layoffs this ye- this upcoming year or programmatic reductions um, like other communities. Uh, everything we've done has aligned to the strategic plan and I'm hoping that because we're seeing a lot of other communities um, having these challenges and laying off uh, teachers, that we'll be able to fill some positions that we haven't been able to fill in the last few years because all these, these districts were pretty, pretty uh, flush with, with this ESER money. On the uncertainty side, um, the, the transportation cost rising continues to be an issue and a concern and um, we want to make sure that we keep an eye on that. um, and a concern and, um, we wanna make sure that we keep an eye on that and do everything that we can. Uh, the other uncertainty is inflation. You know, everything is going up. Um, part of the reason transportation is going up is because of that. And, uh, another uncertainty that we hope, uh, to continue to work with our local legislators on is, is making sure that the state continues to fully fund the, the Student Opportunity Act. I know I've talked a lot. I shared a lot of information, um, and I'm, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Um, first up, I have Counselor Devine and then I have Counselor Graney.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. And, um, I'm extremely happy that the new contracts for para professionals got, um, negotiated, the clerical staff, all that settled during FY twenty-four. Okay, can you tell me how many years they are?
Yeah, so on average, every para this year got, uh, a seventeen, over a seventeen percent increase, which has probably never been done before, um, in one year. Um, and on average, over a three-year period, it's gonna equate to like a twenty-three percent increase. So it's a three-year contract.
Right, great. I bet you were happy about that getting settled.
Yes.
All of them.
I was very happy, yes.
And
I wanted it settled in August.
Yeah. And the other thing is, can you ta- tell us a little bit about the leases that you have?
Yeah, so we have the central office lease, obviously.
Yep.
Um, and then the other lease that we have is for our transition program and that's out of Open Square. So we have about, uh, thirty-eight students there. You've probably seen them around the community. These are uh, uh, students with, with, uh, diverse needs that are transitioning into real life and they get support through, uh, job site experience. There, there's job coaches that work with them. We have one of them attending HCC, one of them at UMass, but a lot of the work that they do i- is really around job. We got partnerships with, um, Holyoke, uh, the, the printing company. Uh, he provides opportunities for the kids to go over there and, 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 uh, paid opportunities. Uh, we provide them with paid opportunities to help support some of the work that we have in our schools. Uh, I know there's a great partnership with Fiesta Cafe as well where some of the kids are cooking, but um, it's really about getting these kids ready for adulthood. Um, they learn how to cook, they learn how to uh, wash clothes, they learn how to do things that are gonna help them live independently when they're ready to do that. And that's, that, that's another lease that we have at Open Square.
That's great. Thank you very much.
More lease, uh, transportation.
Yes, and then, um, there's a fifty thousand dollar lease down at the Maple Street where our Opportunity Academies is. So, uh, one of the things that we're really proud of, um, that we've accomplished over the last eight years is a drastic increase in our graduation rates and a drastic reduction in our dropout rates. And, um, the Opportunity Academy program is a huge contributor to that. These are kids that, um, you know, are, are, are not being successful in a traditional high school setting and they need a different setting. They need, uh, customized supports to help them graduate. Um, otherwise they would've, they would be dropping out, right? So, uh, we have a program over there and a partnership with Holyoke Community College to rent that space.
Great, thank you. Uh, Counselor Graney and then Counselor Bacon.
Yes, uh, you'll have to bear with me. I have, uh, quite a few questions here, uh, Anthony, so please bear with me, okay? Uh, as far as the, uh, state takeover of the schools, I'm neither optimistic nor pessimistic. I'm a realist and I don't see in the immediate future, near future that the, we're gonna be under local control, which I think we should have been years ago. That being said, uh, what are the criteria for expert teachers and what's their function?
They have to apply for the position. They're, they're actually in the HTA, so they're a part of the teachers' union. Um, and they, you know, they have to be in good standing. They have to have good ratings on their evaluations and, um, you know, they go through an interview process and get vetted, uh, just, just like you, we would, uh, for any other position.
They carry a stipend?
Uh, it's just a different step in the career ladder. So they, i- it's not a separate stipend, it's just a step in the career ladder. And we have, uh, one ELA and one math in every school.
Okay, uh, second, how about, uh, staff turnover? Uh, what percentage of staff is being turned over every year?
Yeah, so
We, uh, have a problem with that in, in Hoyoke Publics.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, so we actually had a six-point increase in our retention rates. So we're at about seventy-six percent right now, which means about twenty-four percent were turning over. Uh, last year we were at seventy percent, so we, we saw a six-point increase, which is a trend in the right direction. Uh, but what's, what's deeply concerning to me, Counselor Graney, is that, um, when you look at the experience of our teachers, fifty-one percent of them are in their first three years. So, um, you know, I, I could agree that this schedule, whether it be receivership or whatever the case may be, um, has, has had a drastic im- impact on the amount of experienced teachers that we have, uh, you know, teachers that are, you know, three, four, five years into Holyoke Public Schools. And we need to change that. So one of the, we, we took drastic measures this year. Um, you know, I adjusted, you know, part, I provided more flex- flexible time in the professional development schedule for teachers, um, to use that time autonomously. We've provided retention bonuses every year for the last two years. Uh, we've done different things, but one of the things that we've done is, is we've listened to teachers and, and made attempts. I recently, uh, I wanna say a month ago, uh, submitted, uh, a response to the teacher retention work group um, and, and addressed every question, every, every recommendation that they had in there. Um, so that was a long-winded way of saying twenty-four percent, but more importantly, we need to increase the, uh, we want, we need teachers to stay here in Holyoke for more than three years.
I, I understand that you have an, an, an exit policy, the reasons why these teachers are leaving?
Uh, uh, what we've heard is, uh, they want, uh, a, a more narrow focus. So, uh, I mentioned it earlier, like, there's too many priorities, i- i- there's a lot of pressure. So our leadership team is, is trying to strategize our, you know, really narrow down our focus on our professional development so that as a first year, and differentiate it by years of experience. So from our experienced teachers, we heard, hey, I'm going to the same professional development that I went to fifteen years ago and, and like, I need something different. So one of the things that we're, we're doing in the upcoming school year is addressing that. So first-year teachers are gonna, are gonna have their own separate professional development on Tuesdays, um, a- along with, um, some mentorship. They're gonna have mentors assigned to them. And then, um, they'll be able to join all teachers on Wednesdays, um, which will get at some of that differentiation. And then we're also shortening the day for all of our experienced teachers. So on average, it's a reduction of about one point seven five hours per week. So, um, they were going, you know, we're, we're actually listening to what they're saying. Part of the reason we're leaving is because, you know, we have to stay after school every day to get, to, to go to professional development or we have to come in early every day to go to professional development. And I don't need, you know, I, I, I can go work in another community and not have to stay late every day. So we're addressing that because that's, that's what we heard from our teachers.
Yeah, because, uh, one, two and three-year teachers, you know, that's a very limited amount of experience to have. And when you're talking fifty-three percent, the staff in Hoyoke is one, two or three years. That's, that's, that's limited. Uh, the third question I have, I don't see in the, and, and once again, I didn't get this breakdown till this evening and I had just quickly perused it. I don't see breakdowns of the administrative staff, the, uh, non-contact people. I just see salaries, but I don't see administrators, like a spreadsheet, where they are, who they, who they answer to, what their salaries are, what their positions are. Uh, you know, it would be nice to see
Yeah.
You know, that, that data, when we talk about data, where, where the money is going for those top salaried personnel. And I know there are even some, some, some actual teachers who are making close to a hundred grand, you know, which is really a substantial, uh, salary for, for, for a school teacher. So I don't see that in the budget. I think that's something that we need to see. Uh, fourth, the city's obligation. This is a one hundred and twenty-something million dollar. What's the city's actual obligation?
Eleven and a half percent.
So it's eleven and a half percent, still eleven and a half percent?
Yeah.
Okay, I can do the math. Uh, number five, test scores. Uh, I'm results-oriented as a former professional educator. For instance, just as an ex- an example, how many of our students in Hoyoke Public Schools are reading at grade level?
Uh, I don't have that stat off the top of my head, but that's a good question and I can certainly get back to you.
Cause that's very important. We both know that probably the most important subject of any student coming through any school system is the ability to read. Because if you can read, if you can read well, you can understand most subjects, which would greatly increase the, uh, the, the test scores in Hoyoke. Now, I don't know if the MCAS test scores are used anymore, but that was the criteria for the state taking over the schools in the first place, where, where the MCAS scores. And when the state took over, the MCAS scores were increasing ever so slightly. And then when the state took over, the MCAS scores started to reduce very gradually over a five-year period. So I'm an academic result person. I'd like to know how our students are faring on the academic level, reading, writing, arithmetic, things that are gonna make their future a, a lot less painful than it would be.
Yeah, I can, I mean, I, I, I did share a presentation with the school committee on our accountability results and I could have, I, I'd be happy to share that with you as well.
Well, I was a better, a fine time to do it. We're sitting here.
Yeah, they, they change, um, they definitely changed the accountability system and how they, how they ranked MCAS uh, back in, I wanna say, two thousand and eighteen. So it, it kinda skewed a little bit of like year-to-year results. Um, but the, definitely the pandemic had an impact statewide and in Hoyoke, um, on, on all MCAS scores.
Right, but because the takeover from the state was based on the MCAS scores, the, the data that we need to know is, were that increase or decrease or how the results have changed since the state has taken over to the present day with our students' academic achievement. And I see no data that supports that one way or the other. And I think if we don't get data like that, it's unfair. It's unfair to the community and it's unfair to the students and it's unfair to the parents. And I think the most responsible people for their, for their students are the parents. And I think it's, it's unfair unless they have that data and they know how their children are actually doing.
Yeah.
So those are things that, that we can spend all the money that we want in the world about all of this program and that program and ever, but the results are the most important thing. That's, that, that's what we need. We need, we need results. We need our, our, our children reading at grade level.
Yeah.
We need our children to be able to go out in the workforce and compete with the other communities around, around, around the, uh, the state, the Commonwealth and the country.
Yep.
And, uh, that's the data I'm looking for, but I, I, I don't have that data.
I could, I could provide that to you. We, we provide it to the school committee every year in, in about October or November. Um, and, and I could certainly provide you with a presentation on our kind of accountability results this past year. They, they get released every, about, they're about every October-ish is when the state releases that accountability data. And I normally present that to the community in, in November. Um, and, you know, when I say the community, I've done, um, I, I always present it to the school committee. Um, at times there has been city councilors that have asked me to come in and present our accountability results. And I've done that for the city council. I've presented, uh, in, in the flats, uh, through uh, support from One Holyoke. He wanted to do a community meeting on accountability results. We were able to do that. So, uh, the, the information gets out there and we, you know, I'd be happy to share uh, what our results were in, in, in October.
Great. I think the community should have those results too. And, uh, lastly, as you know, probably better than anybody else, the state has drastically underfunded special education in Hoyoke Public Schools. At, uh, two, three, four percent sometimes when we have a twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent special education need. How's that funding going from the state right now?
That is, that continues to be a problem. I know that, um, they have, uh, I think they're putting a task force together. The state is similar to the Student Opportunity Act. It was a group of, 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 a bunch of smart people that got together and said, hey, the funding that i- is not working, especially for gateway communities, how can we change legislation to be able to support that? Um, and, and I feel like something similar is happening right now at the state. They're getting ready to, uh, put a stakeholder group together and a task force together, but whenever that happens, I see like action probably tailing like maybe five years. So it took about five years for the Student Opportunity Act to actually happen. Um, and I think it's gonna probably take a similar amount of time for anything around special education funding to, to, uh, to happen as a result of this task force that, that they may be putting together.
See, unfortunately for our families who, who are involved with special education, children,
Yeah.
This has been going on for forty years.
Yes.
And it really is, is extremely, an extreme problem in Hoyoke.
Yes.
And, uh, we, we need, we need much better performance from the state. Uh, thank you very much for answering my question.
Thank you for your questions.
Thank you very much. I have Counselor Bacon next.
Thank you. So Howie's question five was my question one. So like Howie, I'm looking to see all the programming and initiatives and how they translate into the children reading and being able to do math at grade. Because I mean, we all know there's a lot of catch-up that has to happen. But on the other hand, we don't wanna lose a whole generation of students because of the COVID either, right? So I, I think if we can try to look at the data in a couple of different ways, you know, breaking it down
Yeah.
To see if, you know, we know there's a lot of children that need special plans to get to grade. And then there's still the majority of students that don't. If we can look at how those students are doing under this current programming that you have.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, um, look at pe- children who need extra help in a little different way. Uh, I just think it's important, as Counselor Graney said, to be tying the budget and the program initiatives to how are the students doing? So I would like to see that.
Yeah, I, I mean, realistically, it's an, it's a problem that has been going on in Hoyoke for thirty years, right?
I know.
Our students and our families go through a lot more than what their experiences are in school. And there's, and there is a lot more to, uh, uh, our, you know, the, the challenges that our students face. And there's a lot more to the programs that they're experiencing, the curriculum there, that we're putting in front of them. I think the biggest thing, the biggest shift, and this is like, I'm speaking from the heart. This isn't a fact, right? This is my opinion. The biggest shift that, uh, we have to make in this community is, is high expectations for our kids. I hear too often, oh, you know, they have it rough at home and we, you know, uh, and even, I can't teach, I can't possibly teach them this fifth grade math because, uh, you know, they have it so bad at home and, or they're at a second grade level, like, we have to demand high expectations for our kids and give them the supports that they need to help them get there. And we, I, I believe that as a community, we've been stuck, you know, the mayor says it best, you know, we're a very empathetic community, welcoming community and, and we have challenges that are really great. Um, I do feel strongly that we have strong curriculum. We have, uh, we finally have resources to be able to afford things that, you know, other communities have had, like academic intervention teachers and the expert teachers and coaches. And making sure that every school has art teachers and music teachers. Those are things that we wouldn't be able to afford without the Student Opportunity Act. But it's gonna take time and, and like I said, I think one of the biggest initiatives that we have on the table right now is a, a concerted effort to increase the amount of experience that our teachers have. And getting teachers to work here, we invest a lot of, of time in, in professional learning. Um, whenever a teacher leaves, we have to, you know, we're starting over with newer teachers. So if we can get So if we can get teachers to stay in Hoyou Public Schools, it's going to have a huge impact on, on the experiences that our kids are getting and the learning that's happening. The other huge initiative that we have that is around early literacy, right? So we, we need to have a, and we have a concerted effort to make sure that our kids can read by the time they hit third grade. We've invested in some professional learning, so we have a partner, Hill for Literacy, that has helped give the teachers, teachers have gone through ten modules of learning the science of reading. And the mod, it wasn't just the professional learning. It was also followed up with ongoing coaching throughout the year. So they've already completed that over the course of the last couple of years. And we're just going to continue that going into next year. We are getting brand-new curriculum in grades K to two because some of the feedback we were getting was that, you know, we need better and easier curriculum for our teachers to follow.
And I think that would be a really interesting and useful and hopefully good benchmark to start looking at as a community, to Counselor Greeney's point.
Yeah.
You know, because if we can start sharing progress, you know, that increases a positive engagement, right?
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor McGrath Smith, then Ocasio, Rivera, Jordane, Greeney.
Thanks for coming in. I know you talked about all of the science of reading improvement, which I think is really important. And I've seen it in my own children because I have a five-year-old and a nine-year-old, so pre-K in grade three. And I can tell you that I've seen the difference because I remember in the pandemic, I suddenly found myself with my son on Zoom kindergarten and seeing that there really wasn't a systematic way that they were teaching reading. And so I stepped into it. I was like, okay, I'm going to get the Hooked on Phonics curriculum and I'm going to do it from home because I'm home, right? It was a very bizarre, unique time in my life with my children. And it was in its own way a stress, but it was really a gift to, to be able to do that. Now watching my daughter Isabel go up through pre-K, it's a huge difference. It's very explicit and it's exactly, you know, in the order in which it makes sense for it to be taught. And it's being very explicitly taught for phonemic and phonetic awareness. So that has been really neat to see, just as a parent from the inside, to see that shift. It's really cool. I, you know, in my professional life, I work in a six-through-twelve urban school in Springfield and I work as a literacy coach. And one of the pieces that you know, I know, is that you have all of this work that you're doing from the ground up to keep, keep kids on level. At the same time, we're trying to respond to all the kids that are already in other grade levels who are not on grade level. And I'm wondering, what does it look like in terms of these teaching positions? How are they allocated? So if you have literacy and ELA interventionists and math interventionists, and I hear that, you know, being in your budget, one of the pieces that you're trying to continue moving forward, are most of them in the elementary schools? Or are you also staffing that up at the secondary levels for those kids that are still? I mean, I, you know, when we started phonics instruction in my building, when we realized we needed it and I screened all of our middle schoolers, we had thirty-eight kids that needed phonics in sixth grade. Now we have eleven because now we've, we can screen it and we can respond to it. But until we had that system, there were a lot of kids that were just slipping through with really incredible coping mechanisms to handle the fact that they had not learned to read at an early age.
Yeah. So every school, every elementary and middle school has one ELA and one math. And then at the high school, there's two. So unfortunately, this year in particular and last year, because of the staffing environment, some of these interventionists actually had to step into a classroom and fill a vacancy. And then we weren't able to get at that. But, but I, I think one of the things I'm very optimistic about is what I mentioned earlier is that a lot of these other communities are losing teachers because they don't have this ESER money and, and we're already starting to see more teachers apply to Hoyou. You know, last year we had seventy-one vacancies all year that we couldn't fill. They were posted, they were advertised, we had fairs, we did everything. We, you know, we offered bonuses. There was a ton of ways we were trying to get people to come. They, you know, unfortunately, everybody was dealing with this. It wasn't just Hoyou. But I think the tides are shifting, especially now that all these other communities are losing those federal dollars. So my hopes is, is that now, you know, all of our schools have these interventionists and these coaches. They could actually do the work that they were supposed to be doing and not have to be pulled into classrooms to fill vacancies. And I'm not saying that happened in every school, but I know it happened in some.
I understand. I taught eleventh grade ELA for a while this year.
Yes.
So I understand. So my next question, because you alluded to this and a few different responses around just retaining teachers. There's a bullet point in the PowerPoint around trying to, you know, invest in an inclusion model that proved unobtainable given the current staffing market. And I wasn't sure if that was relating to special education or an inclusion model around dual language. What was the inclusion model that you were?
It was around, it was around special education and, and English language learners. So our, our theory was, coming into this budget year, and what we funded was, we wanted to make sure that every single grade level had a special ed teacher and an ELL teacher that could be a part of the grade level team. We used to have kind of a caseload model where, you know, this teacher has, is, has a caseload of this many students and it could be multiple grades. And you know, as a teacher, that different grades means different curriculum, different planning, different supports. So we thought that if we can get a special ed teacher on every single grade level to be a part of the grade level team and that they can plan collaboratively with their gen ed teachers and with their ELL teachers, that it would have a significant impact on the quality of teaching that was happening and the supports that our students with diverse learning needs were getting. Unfortunately, we couldn't fill those positions. So we had to, you know, eliminate a lot of our vacant positions that we couldn't fill and, and move back to a model where like, we still want to see inclusive practices. But how do we coach up our gen ed teachers and coach up our, you know, maybe it means that a special ed teacher is on two different grade level teams. So like, really thinking through, how could we still promote inclusive practices in the classroom without having one special education teacher at every grade?
It's difficult to be in two places at once.
It is.
Right, I've seen that in my own building. If someone is, has a caseload of six and seven, it's two different rooms. It's not just different curriculums, right? So I was wondering if that was related just to staffing or because it's a decrease, if it was also sort of a budgetary decision?
It was related to staffing. We couldn't fill, even now, that model wouldn't work because there's just not enough teachers out there. People.
Teacher retention is, is real, right?
It's real across the country.
Look at the entire state of Massachusetts, teaching, education is not in a shortage category, even in the top ten. But in Western Mass, it's in the top four. So Western Massachusetts has a major teacher retention issue.
Yeah.
I have a question around how you're managing the carryover. So you're taking three million dollars out of the general fund in order to balance and kind of shift the, you know, the funding shortfall? And I guess my question is, so what is left in the budget after that in the general fund moving forward? And do you consider, over the next few years, how do you wean yourself off taking three million out?
Yeah.
Is it just because you think the Student Opportunity Act funding is going to effectively start to ramp up as the ESER funding is ending and it will be in the middle?
That's the strategy. So, you know, we anticipate a five-and-a-half million dollar increase next year in, in state aid based on the Student Opportunity Act. And there is a slide in your presentation that kind of depicts that. Yeah, page seventeen, you can see that, you know, I've been in school finance, I was in school finance since about two thousand and eight. And for, for, you know, a good twelve years, what you see is revenue was flat, but expenses continued to go up. So I remember when I was in Springfield, every year we had to cut twelve million dollars. And when I came to Hoyou, every year we had to cut four million dollars. And my job was, how could we do that without impacting the classroom, without increasing class sizes, without pulling away supplies for kids? And we've come up with creative strategies throughout the years to do that. What the Student Opportunity Act did is give Hoyou and Springfield and these other communities that have diverse learners and economically disadvantaged students more money, but they're implementing it over a six-year period. So we're, we're going to see two more years of Student Opportunity Act increases and then it'll stabilize again. So you're right, like, we're weaning ourselves off, off of ESER. Part of our strategy with ESER was like, I don't want to wait till six years from now to be able to invest in academic intervention teachers, to invest in coaches, to invest in additional counselors, to invest in all this leadership development. Why don't we use this federal funding now, but make sure we're smart about it and, and make sure that the Student Opportunity Act can sustain a lot of these great investments that we've been able to make. Not every community's in the same boat because not every community has the number of economically disadvantaged students that we have. So I hear a lot from our rural communities, you know, how come communities like Hoyou and Springfield are getting more money? But at the end of the day, they're, they're probably spending more money per student than we are because that's what we could afford, right? And the student opportunity is helping get at that.
My last question is just around the school choice enrollment trends from slide sixty-two. So seeing that from, you know, FY thirteen to FY twenty-four, there's been a thirty-six percent increase in the number of students who are school choicing out from two-hundred-and-ninety-one students to four-hundred-and-twenty-one. So thinking about how, you know, what are the strategies that you're using to reverse that so that we are keeping, retaining more students? Also wanting to name that we also are receiving students, right? So we're receiving one-hundred-and-thirty-four students as well in FY.
More than we were, yeah.
More than, than we were in, you know, in FY, you know, thirteen when it was thirty-two students. So I do think that there's a little bit of, in a, in a school choice world and we're in it, that's not changing anytime soon. There's always going to be a certain amount of sending and receiving. And hopefully it just balances out a little better so that we're holding more of that funding here.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is, is we got to create better experiences for our families and for our kids so that they stay. But I, unfortunately, like, I can't focus on these four-hundred-and-twenty-one students. I have to focus on the five thousand that are here and that, that are choosing to stay in Hoyou and continue to stay in Hoyou. I'm not saying anything bad about anyone that chooses to leave because those are personal choices. People have to make choices for their family, but we have five thousand students that are here in Hoyou. We got to make their experiences better, make sure they're learning at grade level, make sure that they're getting better experiences. And I think over time, you know, if we do that, the dual language program is an example of creating programming that is getting some families that may be thinking to leave, to stay in Hoyou. And we got to be creative and, and continue to grow programs like that. But, you know, there are still going to be, you know, a part of me feels that a lot of these other surrounding communities have been pretty aggressive in recruiting, right? And they weren't before. They didn't want families from Hoyou before. But as their enrollment started to dip and as their funding started to dip, they're like, oh, wait a minute. Let's open our doors to Hoyou and let's actively recruit. And that has, that has led to what you see there, right? So, you know, we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make the experiences good and the families will follow.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got Counselor Ocasio.
Hi, I only have a few questions, Anthony. Okay, they're simple. My first question is, how big is the impact on the students since we got more? How big is the impact in this, on the students since we got more students? How many students per class and how many teachers in each room? And my second question is, how are the new students adapting to the new school and teachers? And the third question is, do you have a budget set aside for a staff, a qualified staff to address the bullying in these schools? Parents are starting to keep their kids home because, due to their safety.
Piece this. So your first question was the teacher-to-student ratio. So our target ratio is in kindergarten, no more than twenty kids. And then in grades one through five, no more than twenty-three kids. And then in grades six through eight, no more than twenty-eight kids. And then above that, no more than thirty. But rarely will you see a classroom with, with thirty kids in it. That's just an average. That's just a target that we try to stay under and, and, you know, I walk the schools all the time. We don't, you know, there may be some, some classes at the high school that are popular that have more kids in them than other schools, but there's also some classrooms that, that might have, you know, nine kids in them depending on the, the course load. There's normally a, at least one teacher in every classroom. Some classrooms, some schools have embraced this co-teaching model. So oftentimes you'll, you'll walk with a, a classroom and you'll see a gen ed teacher and a special ed teacher, a gen ed teacher and an ELL teacher sharing in the responsibility of teaching the class. Or you'll see an ELL or special ed teacher pulling a group of kids within the class and working with them independently. And then, of course, as Counselor Greeney alluded, we do have a large population of students with diverse learning needs. And oftentimes, that could mean there's a one-to-one para in the classroom. So no less than one, right? But in, in, in a lot of classes, you'll see more than one adult. Your second que, yeah, your second question was what?
How are the new students adapting to the new school and teachers?
So I think what I've seen in the elementary schools is that things have gotten, the school cultures have gotten much better. Like, right, we don't have elementary school kids and middle school kids riding the same bus or in the same school. So elementary schools have definitely embraced this rezoning. What I see in the middle schools, which is a challenge everywhere you go in the entire country, that's a challenging aid, grades six through eight, ages twelve to fourteen. Those schools are struggling to adjust. You know, we have two smaller middle schools, one at STEM, one at Metcalf. And then we have a big middle school at Sullivan with over five hundred middle school kids. And that school comes with, when you have that many middle schoolers in one building, there are some challenges. So there has definitely been an adjustment there, which is why we need to focus next year on a strong MTSS support system so that schools start off strong with strong cultures, building strong relationships with kids. And, and that'll definitely have an impact on, on how they're adjusting. But I have seen it get progressively better. The beginning of the school year was really tough. That was a tough adjustment. We moved all kids around, moved schools. Some teachers had been teaching in the same school for ten years and had to move to another school. So whenever you do that, it's very disruptive to the school community and it takes, it takes a while to adjust to that new school community. But we have some work to do in the middle schools for sure. And then your third question, do we have a dedicated staff member for bullying? Yes, we do. So we have a, 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 a position, we have two positions. One of them is our director of SEL who oversees all of our counselors. And another one is our Student Support Service Director who oversees all of our Title IX investigations, bullying investigations and all that. So all of our schools get trained on, on anti-bullying. Every single staff member gets trained on that. And whenever an incident occurs, we have staff members that go in and help support should the school need, need it.
My main concern is about the bullying, you know, because I have a lot of parents that come up to me and they are addressing, there's a lot of bullying and, I'm talking about in, not just one school. There's a lot of school here in Hoyou, okay? And last year, it was sad, it wasn't here in Hoyou, but it was in Agawam. Then one of my friends, one of my best friends had to lose her child, her thirteen-year-old child, due to bullying. You know, she went to wake him up and when she, she didn't find him in his bed, when she turned around, he was hanging in the closet. You know, and it's sad. You know, and it's sad. So when I hear this happening, you know, and when parents address to me, tell me constantly, come and, uh, you know, I don't know what else to do. The school's not doing enough for the bullying. I have to remove my child from the schools. And they just keep them home until then they have to, like, they get into trouble because of that. But if the schools are not literally, you know, I know because I hear it from a lot of people, you know, I like did work part-time in some in in PEC and also in Springfield, you know. And it's, it's tough, you know, and I know that the teachers are very overwhelmed. Because I had a class of only sixteen kids and it was just me, the teacher, you know. And I was just part-time. So I can imagine the teachers that have to be there, you know, the whole eight hours, how how stressed and how hard it is for them to control, you know, all the kids, you know. They get edgy for, you know, for a certain time and then they start, you know, acting up and then, you know, and one thing leads to another. So, um, yeah, I'm gonna keep pushing the the bullying part because it's, you know, and also another kid had hung himself here in Holyoke also due to bullying. You know, it's a lot of that going around, you know, and kids are shutting down. They don't even want to talk to their parents. They, you know, they just totally just shut down, you know, because they scared. So they even scared to talk to the parents. But the kids, some of the kids do talk to me because I I find a way, you know?
Yeah.
And it's, and it, they don't want to go back to school, period.
Yeah.
You know, but I encourage them to go back to school and I do tell them, there's a problem, talk to the principal. You know, but then they consider that they're being rapped. So it's like, which way do these kids go?
Yeah.
You know, it's a lot of, um, mental issues out here, you know, and adding that bullying stress on top of that. You know, the kids are trying to take a a easy way out. You know, this thirteen-year-old kid, he Googled on how to hang himself. Like literally, he went to three websites and Googled how to hang himself. And the third one, he Googled, he, that's the one that he accomplished. And it's sad, you know, to have to hear and see parents of, you know, I've seen two kids that I had to literally physically take them off from the closet myself a few years back, you know?
Yeah.
Parents got me and I took them physically down. And and it's sad, it's hard, you know? I guess I was meant to to help out and things like that. So my concern is, now that we're getting more kids into all these schools, you know, how, how really is it gonna be like, gonna really be addressing these matters?
Yeah, that-
Because the new students, you know, how now the kids gonna be kids. They're gonna, they're gonna try to bully them also, so you know what I'm saying? So it's gonna be a big huge problem. And I just want to make sure that the schools are being, you know, are really monitoring this also, you know, it's not just about the budget, you know? It's about kids' safety.
Yeah, it it is also about resource allocation. So we do have a significant amount of resources. Um, mental health is serious and I'm sorry that that happened to your friend. Sorry that you had to even have that conversation with your friend, but I I share similar concerns. It's not just about bullying, it's about mental health and making sure that kids are getting the support that they need and that they have a a trusting adult that they can talk to. We have increased the amount of counseling supports that we have in every school. Um, River Valley is a partner that we exist in every single one of our schools. So, um, every single one of our schools has River River Valley Counseling Supports. Um, and, you know, we, one of the new investments that we made last year is every every school has a dean of students. What I will say is that like, when we know about it, when we see it, when we hear about it, when it's reported, you know, we we follow the the protocols and we try to do the best that we can. But I agree with you, this is a problem. Like, I can't tell you what the root of the issue is. Not, it's not just in this community, but mental health. And I don't want to blame it on the pandemic because I think that a lot of the issues that that we hear about that, uh, that the pandemic brought have existed in Holyoke forever, right? Like, it it started hitting some of the rural areas and it started hitting some communities that that, you know, the the mental health issues, the unemployment, the homelessness. All those things are things that we've been dealing with for for many, many, many years. But when it started happening in Granby and in 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 Long Meadow and and these other communities, now all of a sudden, there's a huge concerted effort that it's a problem. Um, we have had that problem always and we continue to invest in the right supports. But I don't think anyone has the 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 answer, right? Like, we're doing everything that we can. I have a tremendous amount of confidence in the the counseling supports that we put in place, our partners with River Valley, our stu- uh, deans of student support. Um, and our teachers, you know, tho- those, uh, you know, what I can say is we have people in place to address things when we see it. We do need help from students that when they're experiencing, you know, uh, challenges, mental health challenges, that they ask for the support. You know, don't suppress it. You mentioned, don't worry about being a snitch. You know, we want you to come forward and let us know because if there's any way we can help you, we want to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Jordan?
Thank you. Anthony, I thank you for being with us. Really appreciate the, uh, the level of detail you go into, uh, for these presentations. I also really appreciate the, uh, supplemental budget, uh, documents that you provided to the city council. It's extremely helpful. I would, uh, like to go through a couple of the pages, in particular pages twenty-one through twenty-four of your supplemental presentation. I would just, um, I'm gonna have a couple comments, uh, some that I'm sure you're gonna like and some that you might say, boy, that's a really challenging thing. Relative to the budget though, I just wanted to kind of first speak to, um, reconciling some of the numbers that are on, uh, page twenty-eight of the budget. If you would be kind enough to kind of walk me through the supplemental and how it ties out to the budget numbers that we have. For example, on Personnel Services in your supplemental report, you had salaries at sixty-five, one forty-one, five oh three, but in the budget for Personnel Services, it's a number about roughly seven hundred thousand more. Can you walk us through, uh, that discrepancy?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Mr. Jordan. So first I want to address the total. So like, the reason the total is different is because the the money that, the the funding that the city holds back for health insurance and other benefits, um, like retirement. So, uh, I think on page twenty-two, uh, it's eight point eight million and two point six million. That's included in the total that comes up to one twenty-eight. Whereas in in the actual budget appropriation, um, in the city council's budget, those two numbers show up in a different page, uh, which is why, um, the the number that, the total number that you see is different. Um, but I always like to, uh, show the community what the expenses are of the school department in in total. Um, and, you know, eleven million dollars is a big number, you know, so I I I that for presentation purposes, I always include those numbers, but it's backed out. And to answer your question on the salaries and the supplies and services, that's really just a a a timing issue, Counselor Jordan. So whenever we have to submit the budget to the the auditor and the mayor, um, we haven't gone through the budget development process. We just know what our total number is. Uh, but a huge part of our budget is decentralized. So there's a part, a portion of the budget that is, uh, staff allocation and we know what it is. And then there's a portion of the budget where principals have to go through a process of developing their spending plans. So we meet with every single principal and they have a a pot of money. And they say, I want to purchase an additional teacher. I want to purchase some field trip money and I want to add a dean of management and ops to our budget. Um, we go through that process, uh, well after we have to provide, uh, the budget to to, uh, the auditor. So we haven't gone back and adjusted those numbers. But we always at the end of, um, when the governor finally passes their budget, which is usually June thirtieth or July first, uh, we go through a process with the auditor of reconciling that. Um, but the initial number is just like, what was the percentage last year of the total? And let's give them, let's give the auditor that for now so that we can go through our budget development process and then make the adjustment in the in July when when we get the final numbers.
Sean, did you have your hand up related to that question? Sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, answer related to like how to crosswalk from the school's budget summary to the the mayor's budget. Um, so to crosswalk the salaries line, you would take our salaries number and then also add in the lines below that are for other benefits, unemployment. If you add those three lines together, you'll get the the Personnel Services line in the mayor's budget. And then for Supplies and Services, you would do the same thing. You would take the Supplies and Services, uh, line in the school budget and then add in everything that's not, that wasn't just personnel, um, and anything that's not a state assessment. Um, so if you add those things in, you'll get to the, um, the the Supplies and Services line in the mayor's budget. Uh, and we can send, th- this was one of the things I had to learn when I first started, is how to crosswalk from our budget to the to the mayor's budget. Um, so we can send that breakdown out so it's clear in the future.
Yeah, if you could email us the crosswalk, that would be really helpful because-
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I'd like to really make sure I tick and tie the, uh, page twenty-two and and twenty-one and twenty-three. But for our purposes, twenty-one and twenty, uh, twenty-one through twenty-four of your supplemental, that is the state of the state as of today then, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Um, I, I wanted to, um, ask you about I know, Anthony, you make it a point, um, so I'm gonna just challenge you a little bit on something in the in the supplemental. And you you've made this point earlier and it's an accurate point. You're you're right. Um, but it's relative to the city's contribution to the schools. Um, you you make this point in the supplemental again, saying that, you know, Holyoke contributes eleven and a half. The average city in the state gives approximately double that. Um, you do point out that Springfield contributes less than we do and you contribute that Lawrence is the lowest at five percent. But isn't it more a function of a couple factors? One is that they're getting more school funding from the state. And two, the high cost of government relative to the levy. Um, is, you make the point in the supplemental that said, well, if Holyoke gave what the average community in the state, they would give an extra twenty-eight million dollars to the school. Well, of course, you know, the total levy is sixty-three million, of which you already get, uh, thirteen of it. So, um, there wouldn't be much left. Uh, just so you know, I guess we'd have to lay off every policeman and firefighter in Holyoke. But, um, di- you you do appreciate the fact that it's because of the much larger school funding that the state is giving Springfield and Lawrence is why that's occurring, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And and I make those points simply for context. Um, I don't do that in any way to disparage Holyoke. Um, but it's it's more so to kind of point out, um, that other communities that have the ability to fund net school spending do in fact do that. Um, because net school spending doesn't change. The the like, the makeup of net school spending is whatever the local city contribution is and whatever you get for chapter seventy. But that number is is consistent. If you have this many students, they ta- they say that, um, you know, you need, that your net school spending requirement has to be this dollar amount. Many communities that have the ability to go above that do. And on average, if you take all of the communities across the entire state, uh, the average contribution above the net school spending requirement is about twenty-five percent. So I I wanted to contextualize that. If Holyoke were in a position where they were able to provide funding above net school spending to the tune of twenty-five percent, um, that would result in a twenty-eight million dollar increase to the budget. That is not to say that Holyoke should be doing that because you're right, Counselor Jordan. Like, we as a community don't don't even have the the tax base, um, to be able to support doing something like that. So I I I put that in the presentation not to say, hey, Holyoke should be doing more. It's really to point out some of the inequities in in education in general. Like, uh, when you live in in the city, a community like Cambridge that funds, you know, three hundred percent over the net school spending requirement because they can, because they can afford it. They have the tax base, they have the property value, they have all these different re- revenue sources over there. And as a result, like, they're able to, uh, fund a lot more. They don't even care about net school spending. They're like, this is what we want for bu- for a budget and they fund it. So I just want to be clear that I'm not trying to, uh, disparage Holyoke in any way. I'm simply trying to, uh, share some context about, you know, how inequitable state funding is. Not not state funding, uh, just, uh, uh, communities that can't afford to do more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, you're you're a hundred percent right. I I totally agree with you. I guess it's how we frame it because, you know, the way I look at it is we're as equally challenged as Lawrence or Springfield.
Yeah.
And 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 my point is Springfield gets an extra three million of school funding dol- you know, student for student than we do. And Lawrence gets an extra seven million that we get, that, uh, student for student. And, you know, my question is, okay, legislature, give us that extra three million, seven million, which I've been, you know, yelling from the from the rooftops about Holyoke needs about another four million a year minimum from the state in in unrestricted local aid um, in order to meet our needs, to be reinvesting in this community. We just can't raise enough locally. And I point out that, you know, you don't even have to go to Cambridge, but just a lot closer in Long Meadow.
Mm-hmm.
They have fifteen thousand residents. So, you know, just over a third of what we do and they have a higher levy than we do, okay? A community that has a third of the residents hat raises more locally than we do. So it just, and and has, I mean, their police budget is decimal dust compared to us. Their fire department budget is decimal dust to us. I mean, they have none of the built-in obligations for retirement and all these thi- and health insurance that we do. And it's just, uh, we're just overwhelmed. And it seems that some of these other cities, uh, like Springfield and and Lawrence, their message is being heard and apparently we're not quite there yet. Um, they're giving some money more for the schools, but they really should be doing compared, uh, doing more for you than than some of the others than the others are. I wanted, on a positive note, I I did want to just give you a really strong compliment. And that is, I really like your statement about higher expectations and expecting the most out of these kids. Um, I I know certainly myself as a father of three Holyoke Public School kids, you know, they got a great education, have done, you know, amazing things. My youngest is about to graduate this year in a in another, the end of the week, couple days from now, from Holyoke High. And and, you know, just got an amazing opportunity. Um, each of them got nearly a year's worth of college, uh, in college credits and advanced placement credits for college, uh, at UMass than other students in other districts would have had. So there's, there's been some amazing opportunities and I couldn't agree with you more about aiming high and 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 looking the best. Our our kids have amazing potential. And that is the breakout. As as you and I, I know both know personally, um, it's the breakout of poverty. Um, it's gonna be the, is is gonna be in education and you can do amazing things coming out of Holyoke, so.
Yeah.
Um, but I I I just could not agree more with your your sentiment and you've reinforced that many times and I and I deeply appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor. I I love your story about your daughter graduating at the same time your son is gonna be graduating from college, uh, because of the opportunities she got for, um, early early college access. I I tell that story often.
Yeah, and, um, it's- Yeah, and um, it's, it's really cool and uh, and, and saves the wallet too. Um, couple, um, okay, so we did the crosswalk. Um, we've talked about, I think I've hit all the main points uh, that I wanted to hit. Um, I wanted to, I mean, obviously enrollment, I don't wanna, you know, Council McGrath, I thought, uh, asked some great questions on that. You know, that continues to be the, a, a challenge. Um, you know, I think we continue to sell the message out there of, of that opportunity. I wanted to ask you, do you think we should be doing more in the budget around marketing? Um, the schools, you know, as I think about Holyoke strategically, um, one of the things you hear about, you know, that came as a negative consequence of us being go- going into receivership, it sort of has been a, a black eye for those that like to, to point the, the, the the dirty end of the stick at Holyoke, um, is the schools. And so now that we're on this road path to um, back to local control and all the improvements and the message, isn't that the narrative that we really need to be putting some resources here, investing in marketing these improvements and, and telling a new story around the Holyoke Public Schools? You know, as part of this narrative, I mean, we have to do it on the, the general city as well. But I would like to see some resources put in about telling the Holyoke story when we make this transition uh, back to local control. Because that improves the bottom line for residents. That um, not only does it lift our spirits as a community, it also raises property values, um, gets this city um, really back on its feet in terms of where we need to take us next level. Uh, do you think you could find some resources or a marketing team or something?
Yeah.
I, I would like you to think creatively with you and your leadership team about how do we project that image and message? Because then, it's something you also can use to say, you know what, all these grants that you've been giving us, State of Massachusetts, if you invest what you've been investing plus more, this is what you get. And I, I just wanna get that story, videos and, and other things out there. So if you could talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, Kevin, I, I mean, I don't know that we need to invest resources, but uh, I would, I, I appreciate your, your uh, your push there and, and your recommendation. We do have an amazing communications team, um, led by Jenny Ostriker. Um, I think that one way the city council could help is, you know, I, I provide a, a bi-weekly newsletter that I share with the community. And there's a lot of great stuff in there. We provided in English and Spanish. But I, I certainly have the team that has the capacity and the ability to, 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 to do exactly what you're talking about. And I will bring back, I will bring this back to them. I don't know if it'll be additional resources, but I'm pretty confident that we can come up with some, something um, that gets at that uh, internally without having to, to, to work with an outside marketing firm or anything like that. We have some great people in our, you know, Mike Hines uh, does a lot of our video production. And Jenny Ostriker, our Director of Communications, has been a, a blessing. Uh, we, we got her a couple of years ago and has just done an amazing work. In fact, our, our um, our Communications Department won an award, HPS won an award for um, for their communication practices. Um, and I'd like to share some information uh, with you on that. But, but absolutely, I couldn't agree with you more. And I'll take that feedback back to our team and make sure that um, we come up with something, we come up with a plan um, that gets at that.
You know, and, and just a, just a couple that, I don't know if we need to give you a hundred grand out of stabilization or something to do some advertising. Um, you know, between, your success is gonna lead the city's success. And obviously, we have other stories to tell about green energy and new businesses and all of this. But it cannot be overstated, your success is the, is a key, key lynchpin to our overall future success as a community. And I would just say that if we start doing some advertising, you know, Allah the Make It in Massachusetts type, whatever narrative we need to get out there about, there's a new day in Holyoke and this coming back uh, and getting our local control, that story needs to get out there about the difference. So that people say positive about the schools. And I think we're gonna reap the dividend of that, of more in student retention. You know, we talked about school choice, we didn't talk about the charter school numbers. That's a whole bunch of kids, more too. I mean, what's that, another seven hundred something plus kids?
Yeah, it's actually gone down in the last couple of years, so. Um, I think primarily because the Paulo Ferreira school closed down, so we got a lot of those kids back.
Oh, good. Um, well, the point is, there's a pot of money there for us to gain back and, and for us to do that. I, and that enrollment increase and that narrative increase is gonna help your budget long-term, so best of luck.
Thank you so much, Counselor Jordan.
Thank you. Um, so, Councilor Grainey, do you still have something to say? We have five more departments, so I'm just trying to.
Just quickly, uh, I just wanted to ask about teacher certification, Anthony. How about our staff as far as certification is concerned?
Yeah, I can get you those numbers. I don't have the, the, the numbers off the top of my head. But we do have a, a, a significant amount of teachers on waivers and emergency license uh, responding to the market, right? Like, we talked about the amount of vacancies that we've had, so we've had to think creatively about how we, we fill those roles, and, and part of that is through the waiver process and the state.
Once again, I think that would lead to teacher retention and a bunch of other problems. And then lastly, in the original turnaround plan, uh, when I read through those original turn, there was a, something mentioned that I thought was pretty unique. It was called a uh, a parent academy before Dr. Zryke, during uh, Dr. Zryke's period of time.
Yeah.
Where they would have classes and so on and so forth for parents uh, and, and parenting to help their kids in the school system. I don't think I, I can remember anything ever coming from that, but I know your, your parent outreach is very good. I know that.
Yeah, we, I, I don't think that ever came to fruition, but what we have done is we've established a district parent advisory group that meets on a monthly basis. We've invested in a family engagement coordinator at, at every single one of our schools. And we have some partners. I, I think even Counselor Isley Rivera has a family-first uh, uh, works for a family-first nonprofit organization where, where they do, they do have a parent academy uh, that we've, we've actually partnered with, with them to, to provide some learning experiences for um, for our parents. But we haven't formed our own parent academy. I think, you know, when I think of family engagement, I think we've done a lot of events. I think we've done a lot of, you know, providing uh, information in the, in um, and, and like just a lot of feel-good stuff. I think we need to do a better ju- take family engagement to the next level in that, like, how can we help uh, give the tools and resources to our families so that they can help their kids at home with their learning, right? I think the place to do that is, is in early literacy. Um, that's, that, that's been a, a, a something near and dear to my heart. Like, I wanna make sure that as a school system, we're, we're providing our, our early, you know, our, our, our families that have young children with, with tools and resources and cool ways that they can help reinforce some of the learning at home, right? So if we're in kindergarten and they're learning, um, you know, how to count in increments of ten, like, how can we, you know, encourage families that, you know, when kids are brushing their teeth or something like that? To just cool little strategies on how to reinforce some of the learning at home. Um, it gets a little harder uh, in high school and in middle school, but I think in the earlier grades, that's, that's where we need to really uh, take our family engagement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Anthony. All right, um, so uh, the mayor had to leave, but he joined us on Zoom. And I'm trying to promote him, but, uh, okay. Um, and let's see, moving forward, we have up next, uh, weights and measures is page twenty-four. Um, and, you know, just, we have a lot more. We still have all of DPW to do. So I'm hoping that folks can just be mindful of that going forward. I appreciate all the department heads who are still on the call, waiting, and just remind people um, going forward, if we can try to like, just keep it to what's in front of us and just be mindful of time. I don't wanna, I don't wanna limit anyone, but I also don't wanna be here until ten-thirty, so. Okay, uh, weights and measures, uh, twenty-four, page twenty-four. And we do have Marcus here, so thank you very much, Marcus. Is there anything on this page or on your, in your budget that you want us to be aware of before opening up questions?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. I'm happy to be here with you all tonight. Um, I don't think so. The budget is very basic um, and straightforward compared to many of the ones that you, I think, have, you know, previously seen and are prepared to see next. Um, it's just like last time, it, you know, I'm, I'm a department of one, I'm a one-man band. I don't have any large capital gains or expenses right now, or other employees or other um, salaries or big-ticket items or really anything of that nature. Um, so I think at this time, it might be best to just move forward and open it up for any questions.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I don't see any questions here in the council chambers.
That's, and that's okay as well. I know that there was a lot to digest with the previous presentation, which I thought was terrific, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Good job, Marcus.
It's all good, yes.
Anyone online? All right, not seeing any. Um, thank you so much, Marcus, for waiting just for that.
You're very welcome.
We'll be mindful of that next year when we schedule the agenda. You could probably go first. Thank you very much for all that you do. We appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Have a good night now.
Thanks, you too. Uh, right up next is the building department, and that's pages twenty-two and twenty-three. And we have Kevin Logemonier on the call with us. Hi, Kevin, thank you so much for your patience as well.
No problem. Uh, good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Is there anything you want to highlight before we open it up for questions?
Uh, not much. Everything is essentially level funded, uh, or it went down slightly. The only increases you may see are contractual cost of living adjustments, so um, I would guess I would open up the questions if anyone has any.
Alrighty, I will pause here and see if counselors have any questions. Councilor Reagan?
Thank you. If he could just explain, I'm just looking from year to year, and I'm seeing a s- sixty thousand dollar increase. If I'm looking at it correctly, and I'm just wondering.
Councilor Reagan, I really can't hear you.
Oh, you, I'm sorry. Um, looking year to year, I'm seeing five hundred thirty-three, eight fifty-eight to five ninety-four, five seventy-seven. And I'm just wondering what's making up the largest part of the increase? Is it all salaries hitting?
It, it's basically essentially filling the positions. Last year, uh, I had essentially two and a half vacancies in the department, and, and those positions got filled. So that's the largest, that's the reason you're seeing those increases.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor McGrath, did you have your hand up before? Sorry. Meg, did you have your hand up?
Um, no.
Okay.
My question was just around the vacancies.
Okay. Anyone else? Hmm, okay. Kevin, thank you for your time.
Thank you, everyone.
And thank you for your patience and apologies that you were on until now. Thank you, though.
Not a problem. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, um, Board of Health is page thirty-seven and thirty-eight. And I believe Tim Rivers is here.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Tim. Thank you so much for your patience and for being here.
No problem. Um, so just going over, um, everything, uh, we added a sanitarium one that was previously defunded. So you're gonna see an increase in that line item as well as the, um, let me see, the auto allowance, because that ups that and the clothing allowance as well. Um, longevity, we have um, two employees that also hit the longevity line. We, we took someone from the building department as a sanitarium who had um, ten years' experience. Um, so you'll see an increase there. You'll also see a slight increase in education because we have another person. Everything else was pretty much just kept the same with the um, increases that were needed uh, in the personnel services line items. Um, and yeah, that's, that's pretty much it.
Alrighty, thank you, Tim. Um, I'm going to pause and see if counselors have questions for you. Any questions? I'm not seeing any. So with that, Tim, you're all set?
All right. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, Carl, Mary, come on in.
He almost always gets the last slot.
Gotta, gotta say, usually we, I don't know, maybe the schools goes last next time.
Whoever takes the longest.
Yeah, exactly. So I've been watching, everyone. I'll have notes for Jeffrey for next year. Um, so Public Works has several pages. Um, and I figured if you want to like go in numerical order, we.
That's why I have it.
Okay, awesome. So the first one is uh, forestry.
Yeah, so what I like.
Page twenty-six, right?
What I like to say about my, all my budgets for all of the, I'll say departments, but divisions, most of the increases are due to either salaries or contractual increase. Everything else I try to keep level. Okay, so uh, I think the best way to do it is just for you guys to ask me questions and I'll answer. Does that sound okay? Okay, so the first page is twenty-six.
Twenty-six forestry. Are there any questions for Carl? Sure, Linda. Uh, Council Reagan, sorry.
Quickly, um, I heard you got a tree climber and lost the tree climber, like, before we almost knew we had him, right?
Yes. Well, we had, we had extended offers to two tree climbers. And they both accepted, and the one that accepted before he even started, he said he, you know.
So he reneged.
He reneged. Then we had one that started and stopped coming to work two weeks ago, so. So we had him, and he was a pretty good worker. You know, he knew what he was doing, and he's gone.
That's unfortunate.
It's unfortunate, but it seems like it's the sign of the times when interviewing people.
Apparently.
Because they, they don't come to the interviews.
Yeah, it's odd. But anyway, um, thank you for continuing to persevere on it, because the requests are flooding in, as you can imagine, with all the trees growing all over everything. So you'll see the list at the city council meeting, part of it, because people call in, you know?
We're getting to it, because we do have a contractor who's working with.
Oh, good, good.
So he's been, they've been very good with us, so.
Oh, that's great. At least that's something.
Uh huh.
And hopefully your machinery is working this year too.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I have Councilor Grainey and then Councilor Acasio.
Just, just quickly, Carl.
Sure.
Yanni spoke about a million-dollar grant coming in for uh, trees and forestry and things like that.
How's that gonna, how, how's that gonna affect your budget? That's, as far as the budget, it helps us with catching up with a lot of work in the, in the EJ community areas of town with cutting trees down, stump grinding them, and also planting new trees.
That's a good thing. Thank you.
Councilor Acasio?
I wanna give a shout-out to uh, DPW. Thank you.
I wanna give a shout out to DPW. Thank you. Sahole is looking way cleaner and neater. So, I'm hyped, because the trees are getting old. The ones that are messed up are getting cut, you know? So, looking forward to the beautiful trees there. Hopefully, we'll be coming soon.
We'll probably start planting, we, like I says, we got the grant, we accepted the grant. We had, me, Yoni, and the person from, who's the grant writer for the state, or the grant administrator for the state. So, we're working on trying to get this worked on as soon as possible.
So, right now, you guys are working straight down Main Street, all the way to Lyman, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then from there, where you guys gonna go next?
That's what we have to figure out. We're doing, we, these were the trees that we identified last year that were infected with the Emerald Ash Borer. We had them treated. And the ones that we weren't worth treating, we were cutting down now. So, we're focusing on Main Street. There are other areas that have Emerald Ash, the ash trees in town, but we didn't wanna cut all the ash trees, you know? So, we wanted to focus on Main Street, cut the trees down, and plant the trees in.
Is there any affected trees in, within, inside the communities, like not just the main street? I'm talking about within the community.
Wherever, yeah, wherever, and I don't have the map in front of me, but wherever there's the ash trees, you can bet that some of them are infected. So, we're going out and treating them.
So, you, I don't know nothing about trees. So, the ash trees must be, you know, the trees that you put an X on? So, I could know which ones are kinda getting, being, getting cut down?
The ones on Main Street, they mostly are all ash trees.
Okay, but I'm saying within the community, so all the trees are, so all the ash trees that you are identifying, so you're gonna put Xs on them?
Not all of them, because some of them we've treated, you know, for the infection. We've treated, and it could last a few more years.
Okay, so how would you know, how would we, the community residents, know that, which tree, I mean, what they're supposed to look like, the ones that are affected? That's what I'm saying, because there's a lot of funny-looking trees inside, inside Sahole, like in the community. So, I'm just trying to like, they look like they got polka dots or-
No, well, we had a-
Things or some, something.
We had a Davey, they're the ones who did our forestry management plan, and they're the ones who identified which trees were treatable and which trees needed to come down.
Do you, um, do you have a list that you could-
Yeah, I don't have it with me, obviously.
Can you email it?
Sure.
To all the councilors?
Sure.
Thank you.
Did you see the mayor has his hands up? Mayor, did you wanna respond to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So, and, and when Yoni comes around with his budget, we can bring up trees. He does manage that, that program. There was an inventory of all our trees and a map that shows where these ash trees are. As far as what's happening on, so there's three streets in our city that have these ash trees consistently in a row, the way that they do, and then you have kinda like sporadic around the whole city, you know, planting of, of ash trees. And so, those streets include the Main Street trees, South Summer Street trees, and the trees on West Franklin. And what's happening on Main Street, you know, those are the trees that have been focused on first. We try to figure out how can we best address this issue strategically. And so, the team, when we convened, myself, Yoni, Carl, the tree warden, we, we thought it'd be important to just, you know, considering the high-traffic volume that travels up and down Main Street, we focus on Main, on Main Street. So, Yoni went with the tree warden, assessed those trees, and identified which trees can be treated and prolonged, and which trees just are gonna be, they're just gone and can be potentially be an hazard. So, those were the, the Xs that you saw were the trees that were removed on Main Street. Other trees around the whole city weren't identified yet. We just haven't gotten there. We thought, let's just prioritize the Main Street trees and then reconvene and go forward from there, so that we have a synchronized, coordinated effort in trying to deal with the ash trees specifically. But Yoni does have that, that program that Carl just mentioned, pretty neat, identifying those trees. And, you know, maybe potentially set up a meeting, Councilor Acasio to meet with Yoni, and so you can see how it works and, and also learn more about this million-dollar-plus grant that we got from, I think it was DCR, to tackle our tree issues citywide.
Thank you. Uh, Council Devine? Did you have a question? Your hand is up. You can come back if you, if you needed to, to-
There we go.
Okay, there you are.
Sorry. I just wanted to compliment the DPW, certainly Carl, and the commissioners. And you can't get more experienced in this type of work like Mary. And so, I just wanted to thank everybody and tell them that we appreciate them and to keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions on the Forestry Department? All right, we'll continue moving forward. The next one.
Page 29, which is the Office of the City Engineer.
Yes, there we go, 29. Any questions on this? Mary, you want, is your, your hand's not up again, right? I'm gonna lower it. I'm just making a joke. Any questions on the engineer? Oh, sorry, I'm so sorry, Council Graney.
Just quickly, are we close to getting one?
I don't know.
Million dollars.
I mean, I know.
I just had to throw it out.
Oh, I understand.
Okay, I'm not, oh, Council McGrath Smith?
So, just in all seriousness, in terms of the engineer line item, 51101, so it says that the requested classification is 112, but what's proposed by the mayor is 102. Is that just, like, why is there that difference there?
I, I requested 112, because that was the maximum that we're thinking about. I think 102 is just because of the contractual agreement with-
That's the contractual limit, but 112 was what you were proposing in order to be competitive.
Correct.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Council Bacon?
Thanks. I just have a technical question. Is your order, do, if you know, is your order still in ordinance relative to the engineer? I know we took it up once, relative to that pay. And then it got discussed, and we had talked about one option, but it didn't get-
Correct.
Moved forward. Is it still sitting in ordinance?
Correct.
We were told, if I may, we, we were told that the negotiations were still going on, so we were like waiting to actually be able to put it on an agenda.
So, is that what we're still waiting for?
I believe so, yes.
Um, hold on, someone?
Thank you.
The mayor has his hand up. Is that new? Go for it, Josh.
So, the City Solicitor's Office is still negotiating with the union so that we can get this range up, but just, so that 102, I don't know how I came up with 102, but it's not the, I, the liability that we're incurring, having no engineer, is much greater than the liability that could potentially occur dealing with, with arbitration. So, I, I put, I don't know how I came up with that dollar amount, but I put a dollar amount much higher than the range that's in the contract currently, just so that we can start fielding candidates. But that's, that's, that's how we got here. But currently, it's still being negotiated. And perhaps maybe, I think Bissonnet's online, maybe can offer an update, if there is an update of where we are on that.
Hello, Attorney Bissonnet. Is there anything you wanted to add?
Good evening, everybody. No, it's still in negotiations. So, we're unable to move this forward as long as it remains in the union. The mayor's correct, it, the 102875 is the maximum under the contract right now that we can move forward on. Carl is correct, that the 112 is what the department is looking for, though, to be able to market this job in a very competitive, very difficult environment. So, hopefully, that'll get resolved shortly, but I'm not sure how much more the commissioners can take on, how much more Carl can take on. So, there's a sense of urgency within the department, I think. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Uh, Council Graney?
Madam, would it be possible to perhaps reach out to a retired engineer somewhere to bring him, bring on board or something like that, so that we could get somebody in place?
Well, we do have a contracted engineer working part-time. And she works about 20, 21 hours a week. And between herself, myself, Mary, Jonathan, and Sean Sheedy was with us, he was helping us out, we spread as much of the duties as we can. Now, it's becoming more difficult that Sean, you know, moved over to the Building Department, that we have to spread his, not only the duties that he was helping with the Engineering Department, but also his duties also. So, it's becoming a strain on, on all of us right now.
We really need, we really need to get somebody, you know? I mean, it's reached desperate proportions now, you know?
I agree.
Okay, any other questions on the budget? Alrighty, we'll move on to page 30, Admin.
Yeah, that's Department of Public Works Administration.
Are there any questions on this page? I'm not seeing any or any online. So, we'll go-
31.
City Property.
City Property.
Anything? Okay, I'm gonna keep going, unless I hear otherwise. 32 is the second page of that. 33 is Highways and Bridges. Council Graney?
Item 53100, Snow Removal Services. Carl, how much did we expend this winter of that budget on the snow removal services of the 250 grand?
We expended 313,337.71 as of, well, as of printout Monday.
Really? On a light snow year like this, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's been a lot worse.
Yes. Council McGrath Smith?
One of my follow-up questions around that, actually, is just around, and I know we've talked about this, and I have as well, a few other departments as well, but because we're now heading into a different kind of winter, where we're often now experiencing rain on frozen ground, we saw a number of different issues with, you know, burst culverts, with ice dams forming afterwards, right, when extreme rain, you know, then, you know, puddled and then froze, right, when night fell. So, one of my questions is sort of around budgeting, knowing that's coming. We're gonna keep seeing that. We're gonna see less snow. We're gonna see more rain on frozen ground. And so, given that, does that fall underneath snow removal for now? Yes. Okay, so like, I think that's a reality that we have to know, that those repairs are expensive, and those issues are expensive to resolve, in some ways, more so than snow removal. So, just to name that that's a reality, that DPW is gonna be needing to foresee and respond to over the next few winters, as we head into this period of winters getting warmer. We're on average four degrees warmer here than we were 10 years ago. So, that's just a reality to what's happening now in the winter. Council Graney?
Yeah, just, how do we know that that's gonna maintain consistency? If it's a reality from now, I don't-
I don't. I mean, like I says, the weather is unpredictable.
Absolutely.
Maybe next year, we'll have, you know, 72 inches of snow over the wintertime, or we might not have none, you know? Our problem with this winter was mostly there were all nuisance snowstorms.
Yeah.
And believe it or not, I'd rather have a 12-inch snowstorm than 4-inch snowstorm, because I still have the same amount of guys out there and contractors and things like that, so.
Thank you. Council Bacon?
Thanks. I just, I see you're going for consistent staffing levels in the budget. I'm just wondering if you've had any success with your heavy equipment operators? I know you were struggling with that for a while.
We only have, right now, one opening.
So, that's at least a bright spot, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we've been, since, you know, we knew this issue last year and how many vacancies we had. We just keep on advertising, you know, as soon as a vacancy come up. And then we have like a pool of people that we know, that we could go back and that, call in for an interview.
And so, are, so the hoisting equipment operators are new, apparently, in this budget?
They're not really new. They were always misclassified-
Oh.
Under, hold on, Power Shovel Operator.
Oh, they were just called something different?
Correct.
Okay. But does this level recognize more what they are in terms of reimbursement?
Correct.
Okay. Because I'm just looking to see, because that's pretty much the increase in your labor portion?
Yes, and also last year, because we, like I said, did the same thing, we had vacancies, and it didn't reflect when it came on.
Right.
So, there was less money expended.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions, so we'll go to the next one, which is 34, page 34, Auto Equipment Maintenance. Anyone? Okay. 35 is Refuse Collection. Council Graney?
You guys do a one heck of a job on that one. We appreciate that so much. Thank you so much, Carl.
Thank you.
Council Bacon?
And I had to give a shout out, too, because I got a report on my street that whoever came down it recently had taken the barrels and not only lined them up, brought them partway up the driveways. I said, I hope they don't set a new standard, and the other guys get annoyed.
All about balance.
But it was a nice touch.
Thank you.
I just wanna point out also, since we've done the, you know, the new trash can rollout, and we went back to single, to dual stream, our, our August last year, it was $17,000 for, we were paying for recycling. And March of this year is down to $2,000.
Awesome.
We are saving money going back to dual stream, and it's significant. And also, I've been noticing that our garbage tonnage has also been going down.
Great, great. Council Anderson Burgos?
Yeah, I just, I wanna point out that before the, the new bigger barrels came out, I would take out my trash once a week. I take it now every two weeks with recycling. I don't have to take it out twice. And I can even have room for like three weeks, because it's so big, and I think that's, it just saves me time, and, and I appreciate that. And I also wanna comment on the wraparound services that you provide to this community is very well appreciated, at least from me. I mean, I absolutely love the way you communicate with me. As an elected official, it is important for me to establish that relationship. And the, the comments and the calls and emails that I receive based on my constituents, they're very happy with those services, and I wanna thank you. Thank you very much.
Great. Any other questions? Council McGrath Smith? Great. Any other questions? Counsel McGrath Smith?
I was wondering around the increase in the landfill contract line, five-two-nine-zero-zero. So what, this year was expended six-hundred-and-forty-three thousand roughly versus this year, the proposed amount is eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand?
It's just based on an estimated number of tonnage from last year. I don't have the full year this year number. So if I had it going on fiscal year twenty-six, you'll probably see a change in that, maybe it'll be level. But it's a five percent increase every year.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Counsel Greeney?
Interesting to note on that line item, I guess three of the top ten companies in the United States of America are landfill companies, people who collect the trash.
Yeah, waste management.
BFI.
BFI, interstate waste, yes.
It's incredible, incredible amount of money that these, these companies.
All right, um, page thirty-six is the next one, and that is municipal parking facilities. Counsel Bacon?
Are we collecting any money yet?
I mean, we've been collecting money.
But are we collecting anymore?
We try. Uh, we've done better at the St. Patrick's Day Parade.
Yeah.
You know, because we manned the parking decks and also for the Fiesta Petronales. Last year, we collected about ten thousand dollars, uh, over the four days, which covered our overtime.
So, progress. Have we?
Slowly.
Counsel McGrath Smith?
Have we fixed the, uh, machine kind of going into the municipal parking garage so that it actually requires you to, to pay?
I believe so. I mean, I'll double check. I haven't heard it wasn't working. Not the machine, you're not talking about the, the arm, no, not the arm.
Okay.
That's part of the
Bond.
That's part of the bond?
Part of the bond.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions about page thirty-six? Seeing none, we will go to page forty-three. Is that the next one?
Yes.
Parks. Department of Parks. Anyone? Can I make just like a friendly suggestion?
Sure.
Do we have to call them parks maintenance men? In the line item?
Yay!
Just a question.
I'm not the one
It's not just you.
I'm not the one who put
I've seen it in the police budget, too, but just throwing that out there. Anyone else? Or just how about parks maintenance?
Just say parks maintenance.
Yeah. So, I just, it's on the record now, all right.
Expert instead of craftsman.
Anything else? Okay. Was that, is that?
No, you got the sewer.
Ah, yes. And that is page, please hold.
Page fifty.
Page fifty. Wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, basically we kept it the same. Um, we kept it flat except for, if I can see, my eyes are going bad now. There is an increase in the management service contract that's just contractual.
And that's five-three-zero-one-two?
I'm sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
And, uh, an increase of twenty-six thousand dollars in the usage charge administration, which is five-three-one-oh-six? No, is it one-oh-one?
One-oh-one.
One-oh-one. Uh, and that's due to, uh, Bill Trust, the software that we're splitting with, uh, the water department. They use the same, uh, billing system that we do.
Okay, any other questions on that? All right.
Can you just remind me what the line was on the contract again?
That was five-three-zero
One-two.
One
Two.
Two.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, that's it for the DPW show. Thank you for all that you do. You and Mary, and for staying, and for all of the things, and trash bins, and thank you. Um, all right, friends, that is it for tonight. Our next budget hearing is June eleventh, and that's actually when we vote. So thank you, everyone. Thanks to all those who stayed on, Attorney Bissonnet as well. Have a good night, everyone.